Bring the Dunbar and zoning, oh, zone. Board of Selectmen meeting for October thirty first, twenty twenty four, seven P M. All three selectmen are here, our town moderator is here, town clerk is here. Lean Como is here, the town administrator, and we also have Leo video recording for the public, and Linda Nickerson's gonna upload it to YouTube and the Dunbar website. Okay.
I'll make a motion to include regular minutes of October seventeenth, twenty twenty four as amended.
I'll second that. Hi, Alan. All you guys. Okay, motion's been made, second call, favor?
Aye.
I made a one word change.
Sorry, that was pretty benign, it was good.
One word changes a lot.
So the vote was? I didn't hear it.
Pre-zil. Lean, your transcriber still continues to do excellent work.
I give her everything that you have before you.
I thought it was very complete.
This is handy when you're giving all the tools she needs.
There's a lot of stuff to.
Well, you give her all this.
Right.
And she doesn't, she doesn't dwell on, sometimes we get off on a tangent with, with, with the discussion, and she realizes that's just junk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna open up for a public comment. Anybody have anything? Okay, we'll do another one at the end as well. Okay. Town moderator, town clerk, we're up for election discussions right now.
Yeah, election update, just to, thank you for providing Jennifer some time in your, this evening's meeting, just to again, bring you up to date where we're at with next Tuesday's election, general election. We are, currently, we have two thousand two hundred and thirty-three registered voters in the town, as of this afternoon. Presently, there was two hundred and twenty-nine absentee ballots sent out, one hundred and ninety-nine ballots have been received to date. Setup time, three P M. on Monday, the fourth. Anyone?
Brief, yeah.
Three P M. please. Woody's been briefed, like, the only thing I need to take, remind Woody is again, if there is any of those plastic chains, if he has them, great.
There, there has been in the past, I'm not sure if they were trashed or.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna ask the question.
Okay.
We, we discuss my little invention, so.
The black and yellow was already called.
Yeah. Lean, after the last, after the last meeting, I was gonna ask Joe Marie to order more of those, the black ones.
Yeah, I thought we had ordered a whole bunch of last.
We did, but we, you know, we're fine that when we're reusing that, we're kinda running a little short.
Okay, so.
I think we should get probably another ten of those, so we can reach that doorway if we can.
And then the yellow chain?
No, 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 the stanchions.
These are the new black stanchions with the, the, looks like.
Oh, yes, 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 the real ones, yes.
And just make sure that they're, they're compatible to what we have already, in other words, and that they connect to, to one another.
She should be able to find out the same brand.
Yeah, please.
When did we order those, do you recall? Was it last year?
No, but it's five years ago.
Is that long?
It's been at least five.
Maybe we can look at the history, it'd still be there.
Yeah, I'd like to, I was gonna bring that up, and I didn't, so I'm glad we'll get those there. Do we have enough of the high tables? We seem to be stretching those short, too.
So again, just to continue with the setup, right now, we're, we're going to open with two check-in tables, with the ability to, to activate the third table. We know for sure, the beginning of, the first thing at seven o'clock, we're gonna get slammed, but again, I don't wanna, uh, jump the gun and put that third table right away.
Right.
So let's, you know, work through that, and then we'll.
Checkout, checkout one?
No, checkout will be two.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
And checkout will be two.
By alphabet, broken out by alphabet, like, before.
Correct.
Yeah, also, I imagine, because of the way you're gonna direct people, you'll reschedule how the other tables are.
Correct, yeah, so that's why, so letting them come in the normal entrance, but having them exit all the way by the bathrooms, the far end.
So we don't have to worry this time about people changing back to their party?
No, we do not.
So all we need, those tables will just be for people that, having voted before, to register.
Correct, yeah.
Actually, you can't do that anymore either, right?
No, you can't.
You can register to vote at the polls.
You can, okay.
So again, we'll have to think it out a bit, and, and think about, and, and even with, when people are coming in, is to send them down a little front, probably to the curtain, and then bring them back to the check-in booth, e- especially if there's, if we get a, a good crowd.
Yeah.
But initially, you know, or, we can still just short circuit it.
I know one thing, that chain has to go all the way, 'cause people always try and sneak back through.
Yeah, in other words, as soon as they get past a checkout, you have the almost a car you make with, with stanchions going all the way to the exit one, the far end.
Correct, yeah, that's why those.
We did them just a little short, couple of years, and jeez, five feet short, and they're sneaking through on us.
Yeah, yeah, so, so it'll be a little kind of a work in progress, we'll think about it on Monday afternoon, do the best we can, and if we have to be.
The only issue I could see about that layout is sometimes people come in, and they wanna go right to the bathroom. That's the only issue, but that's not very often.
Yeah.
To come right after voting.
And a little expedited.
Tell them to go in the exit, I'll go back down to the other.
Yeah.
So John's saying that, on the one that goes outward, uh, we could go over to the bathroom that way, too, and not give them that whole area to walk out.
Yeah, so, we'll look at it, we can move it, you know, we're not, not like we're building the.
Right.
Wall, the wall of China, so we will be ready for the three, Jennifer was very diligent with recruiting people, so again, just even in the morning, we have enough people, in my opinion, I think, again, with ballot clerks, you know, so we have those extra people, if you will, and we're gonna use them as greeters, so again, trying to instruct the people, good morning.
Get in the right line.
Yeah, good morning, you have your I D., you're a registered voter, and again, remember the, the three-ring binder, I don't know if I'm registered, well, we can check right here, no, you're not a registered voter, and I, I don't know how many people actually show up that aren't, but.
I think, I think majority of them know they're not registered.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Although there are many who have voted, but it's been so many years that they say, you know, I'm not sure if I'm registered or not, you know, so that helps alleviate, in case any of them were taken off their rolls, and I think in most cases they weren't, but.
It's almost like they waste their time in line when they know they're, uh, yeah.
So, so again, and, and to also to, to make sure that people aren't getting aggravated, okay, direct them to the.
Check it through the elders.
Yeah.
To the regular line.
Right.
Hey, John, one thing you and I talked about last time, too, is, uh, to have another set of those letters, the A through whatever, and, you know, M through Z or whatever, up closer to the door, 'cause they always get into a big bunch right there.
Yeah.
You know, when they're making that corner, I don't know if we need to, you know, make another one.
Well, that's what the greeters gotta do.
The greeters needs to do their job, and again, we can attach it to those poles.
Yeah, two lines, we'll, we'll, we'll put it, you know, put them out there by the doors, so they can see some of those.
Correct, yeah.
So I know that people bunch up right on the corner there, and a couple people start talking, and.
Yeah.
That corner becomes a mess.
Well, we don't, yeah, what I, what I noticed last time is, exiting that same way out, they stop right there, and they just wanna chit chat right there.
Right.
And they can't have, I think, exit out the far end is gonna be good.
Yeah.
They can go outside and chit chat.
Yeah, hopefully it's a nice day, yeah, go outside and chat, please.
Minimum warning, in the morning only.
Yeah, there you go, so, just, and a reminder to us, because again, we have the tendency, and I have the tendency, and it, it works, creatures of habit, exiting through that door that we come in in the morning.
Yeah.
We need to, we can't be doing that, and again, just staying out of the guardrail as well.
Yeah.
Right, you, to enter the guardrail and need to go through where the ballot clerks are, for checking for pencils and stuff like that, propaganda that people may have left, we need to make sure that we, just, it was one of those that kind of was brought to my attention, so. This year, too, that I had been, that someone had reached out to me about, uh, availability of pens, because again, they, they wanted to do their ballot in pen, in ink, so we will have pens available, I don't want to really distribute them all in the booths like we, what we do, so if people, and again, it's one of those with the greeters, if you prefer a pen, ask for a pen, please, we have them, so, just, one of those things.
I don't think I've ever been asked for one before, but.
Yeah.
Blue or black?
Don't have to be black?
Yeah, I mean, it should be black, it should be black, yeah.
I was gonna say it should be red.
The layout, the, check-in, the pens, uh, this year, again, uh, this year, Jennifer was asked, for people that get paid, they need some additional information as far as, you know, and being a little more specific as far as what hours that they worked, and, you know, start time, end time, their breaks, just wanna make you gentlemen aware of it, too, just so that if you're asked a question, why are we doing this, it's really, it's person, it's the Dunbar, um, personnel or personal property.
It's for the payroll department due to the labor laws, so we're making them more official, there's a signature for the employee and the supervisor, and they have to, and putting right on that form that you have to fill out all your paperwork at the town office if you haven't already, so just so that it's upfront, as opposed to a tick box on one form, there's the volunteer short form, and then there's if you're gonna be paid, you do the long form.
Okay, just making you gentlemen aware of it, if you're asked a question, why are we doing this?
Labor laws.
Labor laws, yeah, yeah, it's, if more of we can all be singing the same song, it's easier. And then I would ask, you gentlemen, just review your duties, what you're responsible for, we are going to appoint people, a lot of them as election officials, that, uh, that we've done with the term rate.
Um, we were gonna appoint people, I think, as ballot clerks and greeters, but then, we might give them name tags that say election official, for the ones who may be floating to different duties.
Yeah.
You know, whereas ones we know for sure, they're, you're just gonna get seated ballot clerk, you say ballot clerk, but if you might also get up and do a greeter, or help open absentee ballots, or check pencils, or, you know, some other assignment.
Correct, yeah.
Then they may just say election official.
Yeah, and this year, too, I looked it up, as long as we post it, and, and it will, it is posted now, we can start opening up the absentee ballots, we can't open up the inside one, 'cause you know, you know, it's a pain in the butt sometimes, right?
When you're processing that.
The staple, and then, yeah, you know, opening up the envelope, so, uh, we can start that as soon as the polls open, so once we get kinda.
Yeah, the thing is, I, John will require, it'll be one selectman behind me, accepting the ballots, but he needs a runner, either myself, or you, or someone, to run from where he's opening them, to where I can hand it to Dave.
Yeah.
It makes it easy when you have an extra person running it.
Correct, but also, we're gonna have, again, an election official that will be able to, we're gonna assign them tasks, but pull the staple off, open up the first one, then leave it, if you remember, it's.
It was quite bolderous.
Yeah, it is, it takes a little while to, to monkey around with that stuff, so.
Didn't seem bad to me.
Yeah, you were the one, yeah, you were the coffee break.
Or you might have been snoozed asleep.
That's all I have right now.
Uh, I just, for the record, anyone who shows up as far as the state, we should, make sure that he gets notified, John gets notified immediately that someone from the state is there.
Yeah.
Out of courtesy.
Yeah, and then another one, I told Jennifer, I've, I've kind of just put together just some, uh, again, just a, a, a script for the greeters, the morning, yeah, you have your registered voter, you have your I D., yeah, the A through K, ba, 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 you know, please move along or whatever, but also, if somebody needs my attention, just keep an eye out for the ballot clerks, 'cause if they need my, if they need me, you're, you're the, you're the, the way to, to communicate to me, you know, to get my attention, so, 'cause, yeah, I think it'll be hectic, but we'll get through it.
There you go. The only thing I thought was kind of, uh, we gotta make sure that the, uh, people who are observing, stay out of the people who are trying to vote line, because it was like, she's standing right there, and like, people are lining up behind her, and so the greeters gotta make sure that there'll maybe be a few people watching, which is fine.
Yeah.
Is there a way to put that, maybe the observer section right there, 'cause you come in by the guardrail, so they can stand next to the guardrail, are they allowed to be anywhere?
Um, no, again, they, they need to be outside of the guardrail, so again, also, where she was, was good, but, like you're saying, it's, you know.
When a crowd comes in, it can be just.
Yeah.
The greeter should be.
The greeter ought to, yeah, needs to, to just, you know, throw our people around, so.
Yeah, and this time, we do have a, a specific person to be greeter for the whole twelve hours, you know, there's three shifts, so we've got designated greeters, and then, at points when we just have two tables, we should be able to assign one of those other people who would have been a ballot clerk as a greeter, and then the good thing about that is we also have, excuse me, um, people from eleven to seven, who are specifically there as floaters, who can both be a ballot clerk or be a greeter, and that way, they can sub in when people are taking their lunch or dinner break, and there's one from each party, so that we're subbing, we're gonna, everything, the whole day, both the ballot clerks and the ballot counting at, at night, we're making sure we have a Republican and a Democrat at a table, whatever they're doing together, if we can't do that, an undeclared who votes Republican, undeclared who votes Democrat, you know, that sort of thing, but just so that it's as close to what it's supposed to be as possible.
Are we, uh, do we have any of those counters predetermined at this point, or are we?
We have twenty people who have signed up so far, it's almost an even spread.
Great.
And they've been called?
I haven't, they've all, all approached our office and said, hey, I'd like to count for this election, um, I haven't sent out an email to say, hey, are you still planning to? I did have one person, there were twenty-one, but one told me today that they were sick and wouldn't be able to, but.
I still think during the day, we've got to recruit, continue recruiting.
Even if we have a few extras, and there's nothing for them to do, they can either go home or watch the process.
Thank you very much for coming.
Right.
I'd rather err on the side of caution, and.
And John, you, I just want to discuss quickly the entryway signs, they have to be, uh, they can't be, uh, stand, stood up by themselves, they have to be held by a person.
Correct.
And in the parking lot, if you can't drive the vehicle, then you can't display the sign of the vehicle, is that, that's the, that's the litmus test.
Correct.
Now, if your vehicle's stopping, the pickup truck decides to put up all these huge mega signs in the back of the pickup truck, that's no go.
Right.
In the parking lot, I'm talking about, anywhere in the school parking lot.
Well, there was a gentleman that had showed up last, in September, that was ready to put up a sign on Monday after, Monday evening, and I said, absolutely not, and then he was asking, where's, where's other, you know, other land that he could put it up, I says, it's your problem.
And we ended, we ended up taking two political signs off the, in the front of the school, and just a lot deposited in the police department.
Yeah.
So, we gotta be vigilant of that, the thing is, on the signs, you can't lean them against the, uh, like, those, they'll come in with tents, all that kind of stuff, and put, try to lean it on the tent, that's a no-go, they have to hold the sign and subject, if they're not holding the sign, the sign's gotta be removed.
Yeah, and Joe's very good at, yeah, pulling some of that.
Yeah. Joe coming?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, off for soon, and Leoto is assigned to the polls.
Any estimates as far as time we're getting out? Eight thirty, nine thirty?
Well, an initial count finished and leaving that building is two different things, as we all know.
Well, I just wanna say kudos last time, because I think we've had two elections, which the, the count has been spot on, correct, as far as input and then output, that's, that's the, that's the accomplishments right there, and that means there's, there's always room for human error, but there was none the last few times, so.
And that's gonna feel good.
Yeah.
For sure.
So, as John had mentioned, we did do some additional recruiting, so we have enough ballot clerks to support three tables instead of two, and because of certain absences, so I have the appointment papers for those four individuals, and the good thing is that, um, this makes us have an even amount of Republican and undeclared Republican versus Democratic and undeclared Democratic, there's an even spread with all of our appointments.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion, uh, to appoint these people as ballot clerks, terms ending expiring August twenty twenty-six, Janet Gola, Jeffrey Trexler, Deborah Tradiya, Deborah, you're bank. Second round, wish for me in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you guys for getting these additional people, it's gonna go a long way.
It's, it's good to get more people, you know, it's good that people are showing interest.
It's gonna be nice to see twenty cameras already.
Yeah.
Up the hill. Okay, anything else for our meeting tonight? Oh, no, you'll, you'll be on after, I'm.
John, before I forget, I have to ask Joe Marie to order another eagle for the, uh, I mean, for the flag, I think there's no Ferrari, I, we've gone this far without it, but if we don't let her know about it, it'll never happen.
What is?
The eagle, the gold eagle on the top of the American flag is busted off the wing, and just for, uh, we need a new flag pole for the, for the old American flag, I would recommend after the election, maybe we drop the American flag, so you can see, in other words, there's different sizes.
Yeah.
We can buy a pole or something like that.
Maybe what we do is, yeah, borrow those for the day.
Yeah. When it's your call, but the thing is.
Well, I, yeah, I totally agree with you, it doesn't look too.
You got an eagle with a broken eagle.
Can I comment on the pens or pencils or whatever?
Yeah.
And when I lived in Gostown, they always had the pens, pencils on a string, and it was wrapped around the end of the pencil, and it was taped on there, and left it to proof, and we don't do that here?
With pencils, the pencils.
Oh, and you're saying some people don't like pencils if they're for a pen, oh, yeah.
You can erase a pencil, is what they're thinking.
Yeah.
I've never had anybody ask, but, they could be, a lot of things are changing.
Yeah, they do use, in Gostown, a black Sharpie marker, for their, because they have the machines, they have to be able to read it.
Yeah.
They're S B two now, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we need another recruit for voters? What are you doing next Tuesday?
Just, as a minimum, please come out and vote.
Silence is precious, see?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you guys for coming in.
You all said.
Let's hopefully see you Monday and, uh, Tuesday for sure.
No school, uh, Tuesday, if you, if you didn't know that.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
The teachers will be there.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming out and trick or treating.
Oh, yeah, I missed everybody coming to my house.
But I remember it ended at seven o'clock.
Oh, I haven't had people in years, ever since the girls were little, you know?
It was, it was a pleasure to see the younger kids up here in the, in the comments, because it's so long for somebody to walk, to get four houses and, and number, but up here, they, they go trunk or treat.
Yeah.
It was a lot of people.
Yeah, it was a lot.
Looks like from the voting status, we have about a thousand kids, 'cause three thousand people and twenty-two hundred can vote, so.
Yeah.
There's probably a good five hundred out there anyway.
They're all warmed up, too.
Yeah, all that here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you Monday, Joe.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now we have, um, Marina Tanner?
Marilyn.
Marilyn, okay, that sounds right.
Yeah.
From three twenty-six Dark Highway North, um, asking about the event used for the second floor of town hall, the contras dance, traditional New England dance event. Okay, go ahead.
Um, I have some pamphlets.
Come on up.
So this pamphlet, um, by Riffka Valley, I went to one of her contras dances beginning of the month in Trichester.
Yeah.
Um, it was really fun, I went with our congregation's youth group.
Yeah.
We had a lot of kids that went, um, it was between five thirty and eight P M., and that's kind of a suggested time that I was thinking of doing that here in town, um, yeah, it was really fun, they had live music, a fiddler, a, um, accordion player, a bunch of Riffka's students who also play fiddle, um, a keyboard type of thing, they had refreshments, drinks, um, it's something, I guess, that has happened in Dunbar in the past.
Yeah, it had a long time ago in that very building.
Yeah, um, I spoke to Dudley Loffman of Canterbury in New Hampshire, and he said that he hosted one year, he couldn't put a date on it, but I'd say like twenty-five, thirty years ago, so.
Fred Mullin just brought that up, 'cause they had a, uh, reenactment contras dance, 'cause they had one down here at the foot of the hill, too, and Leo was there, right? And they did it in the barn at the foot of the hill on Mansion Road?
Oh, yeah, right, exactly, yeah, yeah, we did do it.
Yeah, so I was just wondering if you guys would be open to that?
Yeah, I do wanna say that, um, we do have to watch the library hours, 'cause Lane's gonna play that anyway.
That's what she.
And this will be open all Dunbar residents to be able to come?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And a charging or?
Um, I would say donation, I'm not sure what your, I read through your policy, but I didn't see.
It can't, it can't, it can't be for profit.
Can't be for profit, yeah.
Uh, donation is one thing, but I think it's, uh, for profit, if you charge, I can cover it and get in, that's, that's a no-go.
Okay, so if I had like a donation?
No, I don't see an issue with that.
Okay.
Gentlemen, do you see an issue with that? No, we, um, I actually just got asked, um, this week about some of the people that had done the, um, fundraising for the town hall, would like to come back for the Dunbar residents and play, and they're gonna do the same type of thing, a donation.
Right.
Um, bucket, and I told them I thought that that was fine.
You know, the other, other thing is, uh, smoking is, is a no-go on smoking, and it's a no-go on alcohol, too.
Yeah.
And parking is limited, what day of the week do you plan on doing?
Um, so I'm thinking a Saturday evening.
That's probably the wisest thing to do, because there's nothing going on, and probably in the town hall here, so you get this parking lot here, and then if, you know, a little bit of joint, a little walk down, you get the police department in the school right there, too, which will be vacant, but a little more of a walk, but I'm saying, I'm not sure how many people we're gonna get.
Yeah, I don't know.
And you just gotta be vigilant of the, uh, the neighbors over here, they don't park right in front of their house, 'cause they wanna get out of their, 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 um, their houses, and their driveways.
Okay.
And, uh, because it's, the, the challenge we have is the parking, it's, like, the things with no activities going on, they'll be, probably be facilitating part right in front of here.
Yeah, and we'd probably be out of there by eight thirty, I would guess.
Okay, well, that's just fine, the other thing is, um, I guess, I take it, you're the responsible person for, uh, security as far as opening the building, securing the building, turning the keys back over, and responsible for, uh, overview of carry, we have a policy, carry in, carry out trash, and so what we don't wanna do is, we wanna be able to invite you back, but the biggest way of not to get invited back is have three bags of trash strewn all over the place, and, and then it doesn't, we don't really wanna have that, we wanna make it, uh, we want you to use it, but use it responsibly.
Okay.
Justin, do you agree with that?
Yeah, and I think there's, you know, kind of a general, like, cleanup, or, you know, the floor and stuff, I don't think there'll be much dirt or anything to clean up, but.
In the back room up there, so there's some mops on the floor and that type of stuff, that mops is a big broom, you know, that you push around.
Typically, when I walk the, I assign their in-number, give them the P, we do a walk through, and show them where everything is located, and explain what they have to do, so, that's pretty easy.
Yeah, the, uh, the trash is a good, is a good thing, I think, I think there might be bags up there, but there's definitely some buckets, so you can do like one for recycling, one for regular trash, and then.
And since we have the police chief here, just an F Y I, so, you know, there's gonna be some activity on Saturday, a lot of traffic, so, if there's any issues, we, we, we'll be the officer on, on doing that, even.
Do you suggest, like, a parking, like, suggest where they should park?
Oh, I take, anywhere in front of the school, right here is fine.
Okay, so I could put that in the flyer?
Right, right in front of the town building is fine.
Put overflow parking at the school.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
Don't mention anything about the police, just overflow parking at the school.
Okay.
No, I'm just saying, I just wanted to make sure, see, the police department is available to send the problems.
Right, no. I just, I...
We're anticipating that.
The front of his building with people.
Someone got a little too carry-away on the fiddle, so.
Yeah.
Really, yes, question.
Are those windows operational?
Which windows?
Upstairs.
Um, certain ones are and certain ones aren't.
So you wanna make sure that they're closed?
Yeah, we'll...
But I mean, when she leaves, when they leave, you wanna close those windows, I mean, if it's cold.
There's, there's one tricky window.
Cold night, you know?
Yeah, there's one tricky window that, the thing is, we found that it's, people just give up on it and they go home, and they don't tell anyone about it. We find that, we find it's too, it's...
It's open?
Yes.
It called and said it was cold two times last year, but it was cold throughout, both times two windows were open eight inches.
So, the thing is, Lena will show you the window that took...
I thought we put a, a tag on it, do not open this window.
Yeah, she's put him on the whole match. We don't have to worry about tags, 'cause she's great at tagging stuff. But anyway, um, remind me, when I bring the, the piece of millwork back, I wanna have, um, our guy put a little block there to hold the top sash up, so we don't have to really worry about it.
I look forward to you group having a successful dance and to having future dances in, for the future too.
Yeah.
'Cause we want the youth building to be used, and this sounds like a great, uh...
Yeah, builds community.
Exactly, so, um...
Our biggest thing is, we wanna make sure that any function up there is available for all Dunbarton town residents and not another town coming in to use our building for most of their residence.
Okay.
So that's the biggest thing.
Yeah.
I know that there will be some people from other towns at this function, but the fact that it's open for Dunbarton people to enjoy is a big thing for us.
And then, uh, as far as advertising, uh, we have a website, uh, I think it's some, a lot of people use it, but Lena can put it on as a community activity on her website.
Okay, yep.
And, uh, for, and we won't even charge you for that.
Okay, great. And there's a Facebook page too, like a community...
Yeah, there's.
Yeah.
Big bulletin board right over.
Okay.
Police Department's page gets the most hits.
We could share it to our patients. How's it feel, you're new resident of town?
Uh, we've been here for almost three years, February, so, well, we used to actually live at the Tallheimer House.
Okay.
We were there for three years, so. Went to the Seacoast and I came back.
There you go.
Smart move.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds great.
Did you have a date already in mind?
Yeah, I think on the fourteenth of December.
Okay, we'll have to look at the calendar and make sure, but I can have the...
I checked it online the other day.
And it looked like it was available.
Do you guys wanna sign top on that question?
And I have your phone number, we'll give you a call.
Just to get all questions.
Reserve it right on.
John, can you sign that? We have a pile for one. Well, good, did you sign my name too?
I was gonna say, you didn't sign it. I don't.
Yeah, I think it's taken care of, I mean, she understands that she needs to keep things clean.
Yep, yeah, we'll walk through the...
Like I said, it's open to all Dunbarton residents, so I think that's what we...
Donations, that's perfect.
Exactly.
Show where everything is upstairs. Okay, all right.
Um, thank you for coming in.
Thank you guys for hearing me.
The thing is, this is the one time we grill you for information. Future thing, if it goes without a hitch, it'll probably be routine. You don't have to come in and...
Yeah, great.
Okay. Um, so Sue Bracy had given me a request, uh, along with Mary Gerard from the library, to have those people come. Like, so most of them were performers that they had in the past for fundraising for the town.
Yeah.
So I told them, the same type of thing we just told her, I said, as long as it's fundraiser and, um...
Not an admission fee.
Yeah. Put a donation bucket up there or something to that effect.
Which is, we, I can live with that, absolutely.
So, we have a consensus, we can allow those.
It doesn't say Dave's donation.
That's right. Not today, anyway.
Okay.
All right, moving on. We're gonna review the personnel policy, amend and review. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Lena's gotten some stuff put together here for us to look at. Lena, do you wanna start and go over?
Yep, Chris and I have been working together to, um, make some recommended changes. We've had them, uh, in, in a pending folder, um, based on discussion from prior meetings. Um, this particular, these recommended changes, I think, um, were bringing to your attention that really impact a lot of our long-term employees. So I can go through...
Let's just go through those stuff you have written and read right on.
Okay, so page eight, uh, work hours, work week hours of work. Um, in the past, there's, it's not been clear. Um, I'm recommending that we add, uh, a statement, a two-line statement at the end of this paragraph, and it would basically, um, allow a supervisor or department head to, you know, hot, and get someone in for extra hours, and it basically says, an emergency can be, can include staffing shortages that would require extra hours work beyond their regular work schedule, and would apply to part-time employees. Hours in excess of forty hours will be paid at one end, one halftime. There, no more rate of pay. And this is just basically clarifying.
Yeah, I think it clarifies what we've been doing.
Right.
I was gonna say, I think that's strictly grammatical, so.
Right, but it's...
Clearing, clearing the air.
We've been doing that, yeah.
Yep.
I have no problem, Dave, no, I said, we'll make it happen.
No, we don't have that listed anywhere else?
It's not anywhere, it just, and, and it just kind of makes it in black and white, gives it, um, for, you know, someone reading it, interpreting it, or processing payroll, it's all there in black and white. Um, also on page eight, um, insert a new paragraph. So what we're proposing here is, um, the, this is a longevity. I would add the two words, full-time, because it's strictly to the, it applies to the full-time, um, employees. The only word I would change in the paragraph is, it says pro rata, for ease of, um, pronunciation and, um, clarity, just say prorated rather than that word. And then, um, in the past, the, the board has brought this up several times, uh, you added, a full-time clerk is eligible for longevity as an approved full-time benefit package. Uh, the change to the longevity is effective January two thousand eighteen, as approved by the legislative body. Are you still good with the way that works? Because I know that we've had...
Other selectmen have, have said that the term, basically, they don't get longevity, because it basically goes from term, election date to election date. And that's, and then their employment ends until they're re-elected. That's the challenge that other selectmen have brought up in the past.
Yeah, but I'm gonna want, I'm gonna trump that with a vote. The legislative body, meaning our voters, voted to give them all the benefits a full-time employee has, and that is one of the benefits a full-time employee has, so. It kinda trumps that previous decision, because they gave them all the benefits of a full-timer, regardless of whether they were elected or not, so. It kinda overrides...
So if any position, even on an elected level, becomes full-time, then they would fall under this...
No, they only did this for the town clerk. That vote, vote was directly for the town clerk.
It was, it was, it was, it was isolated to the town clerk.
It was not for, like, Jeff or...
Okay, so no change? This category, correct?
The part in yellow was already there?
Yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring it up for discussion. Okay, and then this is where, and on page eight, I would, uh, ask that the board consider adding a new paragraph that would be referenced to longevity for part-time. Um, and this is basically the same wording from the full-time category, but it also, it, it outlines, um, minimum shifts per week or hours, and follows the same guidelines for being paid at lump sum less taxes in the first week of December. And then I, for clarity, we have had some part-timers that have moved from one department to another, and, uh, wage scale puts them at step one when you move into a different department, but the longevity's still there. So I wanted to clarify if the board will consider part-time employees transferring to another department within the town will qualify for accumulated longevity, provided there is no break in service as follows. And then the second paragraph, this compensation will be calculated on a twelve-month period from the first week of November. One year to the first week of November and the following year. Employees who separate prior to November shall be paid on a prorated basis for the year, and an exception to the longevity part-time payment is a casual part-time employee who maintains regular scheduling availability in their primary department with the town for greater than twenty years will receive recognition in the form of an annual longevity payment of one thousand dollars. So the annual payment schedule that we came up with is fifty percent of what a full-timer would earn for the same number of years, for the same longevity that they stay with the town. And the reason why we want to propose this is because, uh, part-time, currently, our part-timers in the town do not have any benefits at all. Uh, we've done research with neighboring towns. There are several towns in the area that do recognize the importance of their full, their part-time employees, and by going with this schedule, it would give them the incentive to say, I may be at four years, but in four years I'll reach that eight-year, uh, mark, and I could qualify for a two-year, um, annual payment, and follow the same every two years after that. I think it's a, a very positive, um, direction for the part-time staff, and I think it would be well worth it. I did provide the board with a couple of the towns, I'm not sure which one he has it.
I have it.
The, the only thing is, um, I, I have, I take exception with the long-time part-time, for a casual part-time employee. So I work five hours a year.
I don't understand that one.
Okay, do you wanna speak on that, Chris? Can you help me with that?
I mean, I can only speak to my department specifically, but, uh, talking about, uh, like Officer Noliota, for example.
Right.
Uh, because there have been a lot of times in recent years where he was regularly scheduled, helping us with staffing shortages, and then once we kinda plugged those holes, he went back to more of a per diem type thing. So we're just trying to figure out how to recognize...
But the thing is, I, I, there's a department chair right next to you. He's got a whole laundry list of employees. They, some of them don't work any hours, some may work one hour, one hour or one day a, a year, and they'd be getting a, a thousand dollars. See, I don't, I don't, it's, it's like, how do we make it fair for everyone across the board?
Yeah, and that's kind of the regularly scheduled is like Linda at the PD, or Hope, Joe Murray here, or who Woody has on staff.
I guess the key word is maintains regular scheduling availability.
Yeah, and we were just trying to figure out a way to include other town, part-time employees with the town that have been here for twenty-plus years.
Okay, that was my, I think you cleared up that. I like the word regular schedule availability, that clears it up a little bit.
So the other thing too is, you, we may have casual people that are on call, but they're never here for eight years. You know, they don't get to that level. It's just like if you, um, this follows the same theory of New Hampshire retirement. If you have someone that comes on as full-time and works five, six, seven, eight years, and they don't make it to the ten-year, when they leave, they get their contribution that they've given to the New Hampshire retirement, and what the town has contributed on their behalf is gone. That person only leaves with what they've contributed. So this is basically saying, it's hard for people to stay in, in a department and be available when we need them. It would be, you haven't left, it hasn't been a break in, in service, and then you're, you have pretty available regular hours to work in that same department that you have, were hired to work in.
I would, um, I'd like to split, maybe amend that by saying, subject to review by the select board. The, um, 'cause I, I think, I don't want someone to come in and, and, and...
Work one shift all year.
Yes. In other words, have you been, I'd have, I, I, we'd probably wanna have the, uh, department chair come in and say, well, he's, he only worked one shift, but he's been available anytime I needed him. Well, that, that would be one thing, then, then we could live with that. The thing is, we'd have, I don't wanna carve boullard shit. Um, I, I want, I wanna check and balance. I just think a check and balance would be... I think a check and balance is worth probably. And I, I see the value of, I see the value, because we, again, someone who works, has been part, contributing to this town for twenty years. Yeah, I can see that, but at the same time, I don't want someone looking at the, looking with a magnifying glass and saying, hmm, one shift, maybe I could get, uh, an extra grand out of this for working one day. I don't want that, I mean, and then the...
I think, I think the first, stick to the first paragraph, paragraph is for the sixteen hours a week.
Do you, um, do you guys wanna wait for this section? Do you have more time to think it through?
Well, I, I read it this afternoon, I, I feel...
I did read it, so, right now.
One thing's, I don't think we have to make a decision. I think we can table a decision the next minute.
Yeah, we can table it.
But the thing is, I just like to get, we get some subject matter, excuse me, or let's take a, have any of them.
Okay.
So I, I, I'd recommend, I'd be very much concurrence of fact.
Anything else on that section, Chris, you wanna talk about?
Uh, no, I mean, I think potentially a catch-all, uh, we had talked about is that first paragraph you could put, or upon the recommendation of a department head to the board of selectmen, something to that effect. Um, that way, it's kinda putting the onus on the department head to advocate to the board, say, this is why Mr. Smith should get this longevity.
Yeah, I think we should do that instead of even having it in there at all, so.
But the regularly scheduled is very clear key.
Right.
That's, you know, the minimum sixteen hours a week, you know?
Sometimes you may not make that, but if you regularly schedule eight hours a week, and he's been doing it for twenty years, well...
That's what, right.
Right, and that's, that, we're just trying to make sure there's a catchment for
Right.
people who have contributed several decades.
So in that first paragraph, why don't we think about rewording a single sentence that can answer that?
In the first paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's part of that longevity part-time. First paragraph, one more line in there that will reflect something towards what you just said.
Okay.
Okay, I'm ready, we'll go on to the next section.
You are Mike?
I am. I think we killed that. It's Halloween, come on, guys.
The other one doing all the talking tonight.
Okay, uh, this one here, page eleven, compensatory time. In the past, the board has, um, had to, um, struggle with payout for leave time, personal time, vacation time, comp time, and like I have implemented with the credit card purchases, by putting in a specific date that you cannot accrue any additional comp time and/or, um, you will, you know, be paid by a certain date, that would help alleviate and correct the budget, so that we know that they're not overspending. But originally, I had put in the, the line in the yellow.
So they need to get paid for their overtime, correct?
That's a law.
After November first.
It's, it's, it's Department, Department Labor. So basically, um, the compensatory time cannot be accrued after November first or whatever you have on your books. If you work overtime, November fifth, you're gonna get paid that overtime. You can't accrue any additional time. And then, if you are going to not use it, we will disperse it by December, the first week of December, unless you've made an arrangement with your supervisor that, for example, we would disperse your, your comp time by the first week of December, but you're gonna take the second week of December off and use this comp time. And that would be the mechanism that I would pass on to the payroll clerk, that she will have that information that's...
Right, I, I get, you, yourself, and I think Woody had at one point, uh, where you, when you were short personnel, you had to carry your comp time over, because you just couldn't execute it.
Right.
Into January, when we carried it with January.
This is mandatory. It's an expense that's occurred in the current year, and if you're not make, if you're not made aware of it, it could be a problem and carry into overspending on your budget or being, needing to be carried into the...
You're getting rid of the whole line that says, uh, four weeks for ten years of service.
Yep, I discussed this with Chris, and he said the problem with that verbiage is that it will penalize anyone that's at that ten-year mark.
Four weeks for ten years of service alone, if they're not at the ten-year mark.
Correct.
Basically, if, if you're at ten years, so I'll use Officer Abadision as an example, we hired him at the top step, he came in, max vacation, a hundred and sixty hours. With that, what's in yellow, if that was implemented, he has the ability to earn comp time, to give him an extra week off.
Yep.
But if that was implemented, he would lose a week of paid time off.
He would just get paid overtime, that's it.
Right, but our guys value their time off.
Right.
You know, a lot. So take, taking a, taking a week away of potential paid time off for a, a guy that's at the top step, or a gal that's at the top step that's just kinda going backwards. So we had talked about just striking that altogether, just keep, 'cause that's not in there now.
Correct.
No, that's not in there now.
But the, 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 the crux of this is that compensatory time was developed to assist those that are new to the town that won't accrue any vacation time until January first in the following year. So by allowing them to accrue comp, compensatory time, which is their earned overtime, they could potentially build up one, one week's vacation.
So why would you have that part about ten years in there?
It's not. It's, it's struck out now. It wasn't there, it was a recommendation, and Chris and I discussed it, but because you had seen it in your email, uh, to review prior to this discussion, I wanted to, uh, and discuss it further, and...
The real benefit, I think, of comp time for a new employee, where someone doesn't have any vacation at all, allows them to build maybe a couple of days off, if he works over forty hours a week, rather than overtime.
And then if that...
How many comp's lists do you have?
I have, um, I got one, I don't know if this is general.
I know Chris has a, I think Woody can fall long enough.
Yep, yep. Do you need a copy?
No.
Okay, so basically what...
It's two, on the second page.
This compensation even would allow, um, a new person to earn forty hours, schedule a vacation, and then earn another forty hours, because as long as he's taking it, uh, and not accruing it after November first, then we have it controlled and it is, uh, someone could technically earn two weeks.
The county department is gonna be...
It's accountable, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And that November one, we've implemented that at the police department, so we don't have officers accumulating comp time up to the ninth hour and then cashing out at the last second.
Yeah, that's what he shared with me, so.
That's what we came up with.
But when you budget.
Exactly, yeah, that's where we came up with the November first. We implemented that initially.
And I know it's been hard for us to budget when we had stuff happening after November as well, so.
Yeah.
Physical manag, fiscal management, it makes sense.
Yep.
I'm ready to move on, I think that's good.
So, strike out the yellow, and then compensatory time cannot be accrued after November first. The town will pay the employee for unused compensatory time in the first week of December unless, uh, alternative, uh, arrangements have been made with their department head or board of selectmen, and compensatory time may not be carried. All those, all those are in the original wording. We just struck it out and just slightly changed it, but that November first, I think, will be helpful for us to be able to manage and monitor any...
No, the thing is, I, I thought, I thought the original, going back to twenty eighteen, which I was here for... The thing is, I, I thought, I thought the original, going back to twenty eighteen, which I was here for, was it? Department head and the board of selectmen, not, it wasn't necessary or, department, does department head have authority to make, give a comp time into January?
No.
No.
No, you're right.
I thought the only, the board of selectmen.
But I would on, oftentimes speak on behalf of Donna.
Which is, which is fine, but the thing is.
But I'm taking it to the board.
You're taking it to the board.
Okay.
So get rid of that department head.
Approval on the last line?
Yeah.
Okay, of the, okay, got it. Got it. But the first reference arranged, make, um, have been made with their department head, the board of selectmen, that's fine there.
Correct, the department, the department head's gotta be, know what's going on with their employees.
It's the approval part, this is the selectman, okay, I agree. Thank you.
Okay, going to, uh.
We're good with that?
Holidays.
Okay, page thirteen, we currently have, I believe it's what, uh, twelve?
Eleven, two, three, four.
We have actually, technically eleven holidays, cuz the, um. Thanksgiving, we actually offer the second day as a holiday as well, so, um, these that are listed here. Thanksgiving would, uh, include two days. Um, it's come to my attention, and I put it here for consideration. There is a, he, they're asking to add Juneteenth Day, which is June nineteenth, as a recognized holiday for the town.
Who's asking for that?
It came from the police department, they.
Them again?
It's a, it's a federal holiday.
I don't know if we found that out tonight.
I don't like the name, but that's just me. But I think we should go ahead with that holiday, if it's a federal holiday.
Okay, hold on, I, I think we move on.
Are you okay to leave it?
Go ahead. While we're on the subject of holidays, this is a pretty good time to bring it up. I'd like to see, I know it's a budgetary thing, I'd like to see at least the part-timers, all the part-timers in town. Get paid for a holiday. They get nothing. You know, we count on, look at me, I, I, I don't survive without part-timers.
Well, come on, I think there's something in here.
Okay, I've just.
No, I, I.
But I told my guys, I'm like, this year I'm going to the board and we're gonna discuss it.
I think the town, the town, the town.
I guess the first I seen this.
I know, but she, she beat you to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
So, um, are we, we haven't noted on it, but.
We've noted, down the vacation.
Juneteenth, yours, okay, we're leaving it, leaving it, okay. So now we're moving on, nothing else has changed, those, that's the wording that is in there. In the current personnel policy. Page thirteen, vacation. The first section is, there's no changes in the black font. Um, there's just the change at the very bottom that says in a timely manner. So the department head or employee can meet with the board before December first. This has been common practice, and I send out my reminders or memos to the department, and I show them their, their, um. Accrued liability, and I remind them that, hey, the, the end of the year is coming up fast, so I, by having it in the, the personnel policy. They need to make every effort to meet with the board before December first, if, if the.
So down here on this vacation time on your last paragraph.
Yeah.
The town will not pay employees for unused vacation time at the end of the year.
That's, that was something that's in the policy you guys adopted.
I know, it shouldn't say will not, because we do pay them, cuz you can't carry it over. The town will not pay.
That's what's in the policy right here.
Employees for unused vacation time at the end of year, and then it tells you you can't carry it over. The whole sentence is. We should straighten that up. The town will pay employees for unused vacation time at the end of the year.
I thought, just a question, I thought that that had to be approved.
Yeah.
So it shouldn't say that in it, cuz I remember.
It does down there.
It does, I didn't come out on there reading that.
This says vacation time may not be carried over.
Right.
Yeah.
And accumulated in subsequent years, except when approved by the board of selectmen. The employee will make a written request of board of selectmen through their department head in a timely manner, so. The department head or employee can meet with the board before December first. So that stuff in red I like, but that sentence that says the town will not pay employees.
Could you just add unless approved by the board of selectmen?
No, I mean, the thing is, it's, it's a, it's a, almost like a right for employees to pay for that.
It says we will not pay employees for unused vacation time. At the end of the year, we will pay them.
Is it the?
Yeah.
Let's see here, vacation time, maybe taken. It says it in here.
I don't care if it's in there.
Okay, so how would you like me to change it?
Says the town will pay employees for unused vacation time at the end of the year.
Okay, and so you're basically asking them, if they want to carry it forward in another year, they have to have permission.
You have to have, you have to have, get approved by the SLIP board. And the thing is, it would be smart to have the supervisor, uh, doing it with them, because he's gonna, one is gonna manage time.
And that's why we're asking.
Now, listen here, it says, the town will pay employees for unused vacation time. If they've used it already, it's a non-matter. We're only talking about unused hours.
Correct.
And then the next statement tells if they wanna carry it over.
Correct.
So, we just need to take not out of it.
That's one word.
Got it, okay.
I think that's gonna be a typo.
It's in this one, I don't know.
I know, it could have been a typo with that.
Yeah, and we never, didn't pick it up.
It's been perfect enough.
I think the intent, intent of that was to keep them safe, for instance, I take one week. And I don't take nothing else, and I got three other weeks. Well, if I wait till the end of here, you got paid me for those three weeks. I think that was kinda, the wording may not be correct, but I think the intent was so that they want you to use the time. But if you could use it, then you had, my understanding, I didn't read the whole thing, is you had to get permission from the board to get paid for.
Yeah, that next paragraph explains that.
Right, but I think that was the intent, rather the wording got corrected.
Right, and I think they changed some portions around when they did that other intent.
Okay.
Cuz that was new to go to the SLIP board, so.
Yeah, so that's the same that's in here, I'll remove the word not.
Yep.
But the red, is that okay, I'm removing?
Yeah, I do like that.
All right, only because it's, it's easier for people to.
No, I, I want to go, we, we, we just brought up a good point here, because we're having them come in by December first. We don't wanna necessarily pay people, um, out for vacation, like, oh, I'm just not gonna take any vacation, I'll get paid, nice big check. No, the thing is, that, to be paid out at the end of the year, you, December first, if you have access leave. You, you have to come to the SLIP board and say, I'm not gonna take vacation, I'm, I'm just gonna be paid out.
Their budget for that particular line is for fifty-two weeks. If you're paying them out an additional two weeks, be, because they don't have time to take it. They're actually getting paid fifty-four weeks.
Right.
So there's a budgeting issue as well, that's why to get it, a discussion started by December first.
So that's right, which it is.
Yeah.
So why don't we read this discussion?
No, I'm saying that, um.
We're doing it by December first to give us time to make a.
It's, we're, we're gonna, they can still take, uh, vacation if they're, okay.
Well, if you remember a few years, like, we waited till like December thirtieth.
Yes.
Didn't give her any time.
Right, right.
And there was no time to use the hours or.
Right, right.
Right, absolutely not.
And then the following top, of the next page is the same that was in the book previously, and there are no changes there. And let's put their, submit a request in writing, um, at least two weeks in advance, it's standard. And can only be taken if the request is approved by your department head or supervisor, there's no issues there, that's our standard practice right now.
So you're, you're down the middle of.
So now we'll go to page fourteen, insert new?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so this is a new paragraph, again, um, it would require that I, um. I would be interested in putting, inserting it below personal days, and then changing the title on the first section for personal days. Cuz it applies to full-time, so I'd be, that paragraph would start as personal days, full-time. There are no changes in the wording. The new paragraph would be inserted below this, and it would be part-time employee paid time off. Regularly scheduled ti- as part-time employees will accrue paid time off based on the approved chart below. The average hours of work for the previous year will be used to calculate the paid time off for the following year. Paid time off cannot be carried over to a subsequent year, accumulated in subsequent years, or cashed out. And this template is what we had used when we were paying the transfer station part-time staff for travel allowance. I, I feel like it, it was just very general, but it was, um, it gave us a guideline for if you're a part, fall, January first following that, the date of hire. To be used in the following year, part-time paid off will go as follows, less than fifteen hours, you get sixteen hours or two days during the course of the year. Or the following year, sixteen to twenty-three hours, you get thirty-two hours or four days. Twenty to four, uh, twenty-four to thirty-one hours, you would get forty-eight hours or six days. Thirty-two to thirty-four and a half hours, you would get fifty-six hours or seven days.
I like, I like, I like the concept, I think the, I think I'd like to cut it by half, I like to recommend cut it by half, completely by half. Uh, from two days to one day, four days, two days, six to three, and seven to, to four. In other words, it's just a, I like to do baby steps here. Um, I don't mind giving, paying time off, but I, I think we're being over generous here.
Well, see, the problem is, in my office, we're open Monday through Friday, and we have, I have regular set hours. For individuals that work at part-time, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and when they stick to that schedule. If a holiday falls on that day, they lose one whole eight-hour shift. And with this would enable them to, on a holiday, Monday, be able to use one of these personal days, so they have a regular paid week. And the same goes at the end of the year. Uh, Thanksgiving falls on a Thursday and a Friday, so have that individual who usually works Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. It's gonna lose two days during that shift that week.
So why don't we just pay them for the holidays and scratch this line?
That's what I'm thinking too.
Cuz I, I had this conversation with my guys, same thing, like.
It, we wanted, in other words, it's kinda, it kinda gets screwed when you get a holiday.
Right, and they're part-time, we rely on them.
Right.
We rely throughout the town on part-timers.
Well, Lean gave us some other towns, and one town that came to mind to me, is our part-time employees, is they give them fifty percent. Of their, uh, so they give them four hours of pay.
Yeah, okay.
I kinda like that, because they're part-time, they're not full-time, they shouldn't get a full-time day, you know, they are part-timers.
So would this be granted to, are all part-timers, on, if it's a holiday on a Monday, they don't, you should work, they're gonna get four hours of holiday pay?
Yeah.
That would be fair, because in my situation, one person works the first three days of the week, the other one works the end of the week, so the holidays affect them differently. A Thursday from Veterans Day or whatever.
So you guys good with that, how that's worded in that?
I, I, I think it's an initial step, we can, we can, I think it's worthwhile, what do you think, Woody?
So, if I'm hearing it, now what happens if it's not a normal workday for them?
Doesn't matter, holiday is.
A holiday as far as.
So it would be right across the.
Yeah.
So they'd have about eleven holidays at four hours.
Forty, forty-four hours.
Thirteen holidays.
Twelve.
Twelve, so forty.
Maybe you added another one with that.
Forty-eight hours is what it would come out to for the whole year.
I think it's a step in the right direction. I mean, you're giving them something, cuz right now they're getting nothing.
Right.
I mean, I'm, I mean, like, day after Thanksgiving, my guys come in and work, so they get the overtime pay for that, but the day before.
Maybe we should just give them two hours then.
I was gonna say, four, forty-eight hours is six days of pay, that's pretty, pretty good.
But that's, is that, is that what it equates to?
Forty-eight hours is six days of pay.
So, we're breaking the line.
That's pretty reasonable for a part-time.
It's, it, to me, it's just, it gives them something.
And the thing is, we can always address it, if it's too little, we can address it in, in subsequent years.
Okay, so hear me out here.
Better than what they're getting now.
Nothing.
Which is nothing.
But hear me out here, what I found, and when we were doing the travel allowance, the transfers, we had to be fair to the person that was working four shifts. So by going lower for the people that work one shift, they're not getting the same incentive that someone who's working four shifts.
That's true. What are you telling me?
So like you were saying before, like one, a person that works one day a week as a part-time employee can get to work. Someone that works three days a week as a part-time employee gets the same benefits regardless of how, how scheduled.
And it's, what I like about it is it's not giving them really time off. They're getting paid a holiday. So if his guys are scheduled to work on that holiday, they work, plus they get four hours.
Well, they get time in the house for that holiday.
No, but what you said, when, when, when.
Well, they're part-timers, they wouldn't get time.
What Justin brought up, it says.
Yeah, it's in the person employee, if you work the holiday, you get time in the house.
Yeah, they get paid on the Friday.
Cuz it's, cuz it's just that Friday, cuz we have to open Saturday, so.
I, I agree with Justin brought up, I, I like the stratification, because, um, some people don't work, uh, maybe one day a week down there, he's getting paid every holiday. Whereas the, the guy who works three days a week gets the same amount, I mean, what's, what's the disparity here?
It's just a pain to track it all.
Oh, I don't think so.
Now, uh, I don't think so. It worked for the transfer station, right? We ran your reports, and were able to determine, in that, that case, it was a month, but this year, we'll run it at the end of the year, and then they will have.
Well, they should get paid in that week, just like a regular person gets paid, you should get paid that week. So in other words, if.
The same year, the same calendar.
The same week, the same calendar week, so if Christmas is Tuesday. Then you, that week when you put your timesheet in, if it's two hours, you decide to pay him, or four hours, they should get it that week.
Do you wanna do it, do you wanna do, um, instead of having this thing labeled like it is?
Yeah, so it's not a single year dispersal.
Okay, so you're saying in the week of a holiday, during the week of a holiday, that's what the hours will be, that will determine what they get paid.
Yeah, so look in here, this part-time employee paid time off.
Yep.
Instead of doing that, we could do holiday pay, sixteen hours and under.
Yeah.
Or over sixteen hours, so you get two hours for sixteen hours and under, four hours for.
Okay.
Thirty-two and, well, sixteen, seventeen to thirty-two.
Yeah, thirty-two and under, thirty-four and a half and under.
Oh, I see.
And it's regularly scheduled, so the people who work one or tw- one or two days a year would benefit from this.
Definitely.
So, I mean, sixteen, two hours.
So, we'll do a holiday pay, sixteen hours and under will be two hours.
Yeah. Two hours.
And thirty-four and a half and under will be.
How many, four?
Four.
Okay, and then eliminate the two lines in the middle.
So why wouldn't you just simplify and put regularly scheduled, scheduled employees, cuz I have an employee can only work two hours a week. I mean, two days a week, because if he works more than that, he loses some of his retirement benefits.
What we're trying to do is give you.
You see what I'm saying? So, because he had, he can't work those extra hours, because it puts him into a.
Yeah, but that's his situation, not mine.
Yeah.
No.
But follow me.
Yeah, yeah.
If they work in, we're trying to develop it, so the guy that comes in one day a week for you is not getting four hours of holiday pay. Where the guy that comes in three days for you is still just getting four hours. So sixteen hours and under, we're gonna pan for two hours. Um, thirty-four and a half and under to sixteen, we're gonna give him four hours.
So he's gonna have two categories and not four categories.
Yeah, okay.
Four is way too. The only way I was kinda understanding, you were saying that we were going four categories.
No, they, they, they was trying to simplify the look there.
Yeah, because this stuff doesn't seem like much for us, but when I go over the hours, especially for your department.
Yep.
Um, when I go over on Monday morning, it's messy to go through when you end up mixing holidays with full-time, with part-time, with overtime, with calls.
Okay, so this first, this average hours of work week will change to say, in a week, uh, with a holiday somehow, I have to say.
Well, it, it'll be paid two ways, Lee.
Yep.
In the week of a holiday, if there's anything left over, and the remaining balance will be paid by year-end.
What are you talking about?
No, you're just going to.
Just pay it in, I think you gotta pay it in the week.
No, I'm, I'm, but he's, we're gonna give him, we're gonna give him, um.
Two hours and four hours, that's it.
Yeah, and we're paying it at the end of the week.
At the end of the, after the.
We're not recruiting anything, or holding anything.
Right, right, so say for instance, I'm part-time, he's part-time, he works four days, he's gonna get one thing, I work two days, I'm gonna get something else.
Correct, two hours of work.
And then we get paid in the same week, which you should.
The holiday week, you get paid on the holiday week.
But the catchment is the regularly scheduled, so if you have a very casual employee, they're not gonna get.
Yeah.
Uh, um, I guess it doesn't apply to the police department, because there's no part-timers, right?
Linda.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Well, well, now, it could, you know, we don't have to put regular schedule, I guess, I don't know. I guess we need to, cuz you have.
I, I would just to.
You have casual.
You have a couple people that work one or two days a year.
The guy that works one day is gonna, hey, they're getting a benefit on.
Guy that helps you with the whole recycling.
Say for instance, the chief gets a part-time officer that works one day a week or two days a month, and. Wait a minute, these guys are getting the benefit, well, the personnel plan doesn't say that, I can't get that benefit, but if it's spelt out in there, then you can't.
I think we're spot on.
Then you're covered.
I think regularly scheduled is clean.
It is, yes.
All right, so I'm changing it now. Regularly scheduled part-time employees will be paid holiday pay based on the approved chart below. Yes?
Yeah.
Makes sense, huh?
And there's only two categories.
The next sentence is gonna get cr- scratched out.
You can even skip the chart below and just put it in the paragraph. Zero to sixteen hours will be two hours holiday pay. And sixteen or seventeen hours to thirty-four and a half will be four hours holiday pay.
Okay, I will.
Get rid of the whole chart.
Okay, I will, I'll insert it here. And then it, the last sentence in this paragraph will be, paid time off may not, or no, paid holiday may not be carried over.
No, I'm not need it, this is gonna be paid that week.
Oh, okay, yep, yep.
And get rid of all that mess.
All right, get all, rid of all that, kind of like that, and then just put sixteen, sixteen hours or less, two hours, and then thirty-two, or thirty-four and a half. Alright, get all, rid of all that, kind of like that, and then just put sixteen, sixteen hours or less, two hours, and then thirty-two, uh, thirty-four and a half hours.
I mean, sixteen and a half hours.
Four hours, okay.
I like that.
I think that's good enough.
I think we got it.
It's workable on the budget.
So instead, yeah, and, and there are, we, we have budgeted them for those days.
Well, we're gonna have to take the turkeys away.
Part-time employees.
Not the turkeys.
Holiday pay, okay, got it.
Where goes the turkey?
Thank you, um, page twenty, I wanna insert a new bullet at the end of the medical plan. Um, we recently have had some of the newer employees enroll in their medical, uh, flexible medical savings plan, but there's no reference of that in our personnel policy. It's just, um, it just basically says, the town participates as the employer, um, particip- excuse me, the town of Dembarne, as the employer, participates in a flexible spending plan. In parentheses, FSA, through the town's healthcare provider, this is an optional enrollment program that helps employees budget for unexpected medical expenses.
Somewhere in there, Lean.
Mm-hmm.
So that they understand, you should say, this is a pre-tax, when you pull out FSA, that's pre-tax. So that's the biggest benefit to that, you're not paying taxes on money you're setting aside, uh, for major medical expenses.
So, optional enrollment program, okay, optional enrollment program, pre-tax enrollment program.
Yeah, that, I think I should.
Optional pre-tax enrollment program that helps employees budget for unexpected medical expenses.
Or you can just put the F, FSA, uh, program as pre-tax, right at the end, just keep it simple, instead of trying to change.
Okay. Okay, got it, okay, and then the last piece is, just inserting this general, um, statement. The board's agreement authorizes the town administrator to update formatting, grammar, and spelling throughout the personnel plan without changing the intent of this poli- policy document as needed. It's, for example, on the.
spelling mistake.
Page eight, longevity full-time, it said eight, it said eighth, and it should be reading the eighth, so the spelling is incorrect. So I put some strong, um, support staff that profreed, and, um, it drives them crazy when they see that punctuation's not in the right place or whatever.
So you're gonna rework this and do less than a copy?
A clean copy, just be, no changes, okay.
I think what we're saying.
Thank you for hearing us, uh, long overdue, and I think our part-time staff will, um, greatly appreciate this.
Well, really, you give them two additional benefits, you give them the holiday, a minimal holiday pay.
Yeah.
And you also give longevity overtime.
Yeah, yeah, it does take time to get there, cause, uh.
Okay, guys, let's move on, okay? Let's review and discuss the stipend in place of the medical plan, full-time employees.
So to also refer to is in lieu of, rather of, in lieu of health. So, on this three, I've got paperclips, with a long, two long sheets and a summary sheet.
Justin, you want to do that for some of the main file?
So basically, what I have provided for you on the.
Well, this goes from the top.
The top section is the current benefit, uh, for a, an employee enrolled in stipend and lieu of single health benefit.
What are you on, Lean?
This long sheet, there's three pieces, one sideways and two long ones.
That's what you do, looks like this.
Yep, he's got it, he's got it. Okay, the very top section is what I would typically, that, um, just above the yellow marker, is what I would disperse to the employee as the personnel. As the plan rate changes, they get notification, this is what your stipend's going to be.
Four ninety-seven to eighty-seven.
Yeah, and, and April this year, you guys approved sixty percent of the lower single plan, and that was what the current, um, stipend will be for January first. That being said, we have brought before the board, a proposal to increase that, um, sixty percent of a single plan to just a flat annual rate. And that, you can see it just below the yellow section, sixty percent would be five thousand nine hundred seventy-four forty-nine. We're proposing a eighty-five hundred flat rate, which would be seven oh eight thirty-three.
Who's we?
We, your department heads, speaking on behalf of your employees. And so the sta- stipend increase would increase per employee that's enrolled in this plan, instead of a health plan. It would increase two thousand five hundred twenty-five fifty-one.
Can we talk about the savings to the town that were savings?
Yeah.
We just did this one in April, four eighteen twenty-four.
Yeah.
Why are we revisiting it so fast?
Because we don't think that it's, um, incentive enough to get people to move from our health plan to the stipend plan. So currently, we have one employee who's enrolled in a family plan, that if the stipend went to the flat rate, he would jump onto his spouse's plan. And that would reduce the overall cost of the towns. So if you look at eighteen, it would apply, the line eighteen, line nineteen, eighty percent family pa- plan, costs the employer twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and four dollars. Line twenty, eighty percent two-person plan, we currently have two employees that are enrolled in that qual- plan. Then we go into the Plan B options, and we currently have two employees enrolled in the Family Plan B. Which costs forty-three thousand sixteen dollars to the employer, every year. And then, we also have, um, two employees that are still grandfathered out of the hundred percent. So we have one ti- uh, family plan at twenty-six eight eighty-five, and one two-person plan at nineteen, nine forty-six.
What do you mean hundred percent, I thought they all changed.
No, no.
They're grandfathered in, it was a, um.
Who got grandfathered, cause, yeah, who got grandfathered? I've been here twenty-four years.
Exactly.
She, the two of us are grandfathered, Linda was grandfathered, but now she's gone.
She's been three.
So now we're down to two.
Not the family, just the employee, cause it used to be, when I got hired, it was the whole family.
You are, you are covered a hundred percent for your whole family plan, you don't pay anything for your medical.
I had to take a lower policy.
That's right, but it's still a hundred percent.
And then I pay nine thousand dollars out of that, I pay nine thousand dollars out of that policy.
That's, that's the co-pay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Price, yeah, that was the.
But I never had that before, that's what I'm saying, so that, that's not necessarily a hundred percent true.
I, I understand exactly what you're saying.
Yeah, so, follow that up with me again.
Okay, which part of that?
The part that is a hundred percent, he's paying part of it, I don't.
So what he is saying is, we went from one plan option for the, every employee, which was a very desirable plan. And then Bob Martel proposed two plan options, and they, he said, if your grandfathered employees want to continue with a hundred percent, they're gonna have to take Plan B. Plan B has a higher co-pay, but they have nothing that's deducted out of the employee, so you're still gonna have to pay, I pay five thousand per pers- is it three thousand per person?
Three thousand a person.
Three thousand per person.
So you're saying for deductible?
For deductibles.
I never had that.
But there's nothing that comes, it's, the hundred percent is paid for by the employer, for the plan itself.
Okay.
And then any of your last coming in.
But the other Plan A, there was no deductible.
Yeah, there, it's a thousand dollar deductible.
It's just, it's a little bit, you pay a little bit more for a little bit less deductible.
But your employee pays twenty percent of that plan, but it's still, you can see that Plan, um, A, Family Plan, is twenty-seven thousand seven oh four. Of which, you're, you add twenty percent to that, and your employee is having that deducted out of their payroll, every week, or every month. Um, but if you look at the same Family Plan, with the higher co-pay, it's, um, nah, let's see here, one, one. Family Plan B.
It's in line twenty-two.
It's actually twenty-two thousand, cause it's two of them, we have, currently have two employees enrolled in Family Plan B, which is forty, it's twenty-one thousand five oh eight for each one of those employees. So I multiply it by two, but there, you have to add twenty percent for each of those, that's what comes out of their paycheck. So right now, for eight employees, three enrolled in the current stipend, we are looking at a budget of one thou- a hundred and seventy-six thousand four eighty-six.
How many people you have in the sixty percent stipend program now?
Three, in red, line twenty-six.
Okay, it doesn't say three anywhere, though.
Yeah, upwards of the right, oh, you're looking at the.
I was looking at people.
So, you have to add that into the medical budget, because that's where we're gonna be docking the expense, the reimbursement for that. Then we, go fast forward, we have to add two employees, we're looking at, we have to budget Family Plans, cause we don't know what it is that they're going to enroll in. One will, um, be, uh, Family Plan A twelve months, and Family Plan A five months, based on what the board has approved. The twelve months is the highway worker that we approved at town meeting this past March, that's not yet filled, but we still have to prepare and budget for it. So add the two, the new employees, we're looking at two hundred and fifteen thousand seven thirty-four, for the medical budget.
And why are you subtracting those three other ones?
Because I want you to look, understand that on line thirty-one, when I'm subtracting the stipend in lieu of, which is the seventeen thousand, the health benefits without the stipends is one ninety-seven eight eleven. And we are proposing a flat fee stipend of eighty-five hundred, so currently, for the three that are enrolled in that, it would cost the town twenty-five thousand five hundred.
Instead of seventeen nine.
Correct, seventeen nine eight, cause there's an additional two thousand five tw- fifty, five twenty-five for each enrolled person. We now know that we have one interested employee who would go on the stipend in lieu of, that would bring us up to four employees on the stipend in lieu of. Rather than a, a Family Plan, which he's currently enrolled in, which is twenty-six thou- oh, no, excuse me, twenty-one thousand five oh eight. So rather than pay that fourth employee twenty, pay on his behalf, twenty-one thousand five oh eight, we now will be contributing eighty-five hundred to that person.
I think, I go to line forty-four, that's the bottom line savings.
So, line forty-four, times three, if you had to pay a Family Plan, you'd be paying fifty-seven thousand six twelve more. Than what you are paying your three employees that are not enrolled in there, because right now, all three of these people, um, can I mention names, not, have a problem?
Not.
So we have three employees currently enrolled, they all have families, so we would be guaranteed that we would have to pay at least eighty-three thousand for them to have medical. But we're offering them five thousand nine seventy-four, we're proposing that you bring it up to a flat rate.
Okay, so we have three employees that are on it, that are using it.
Yep, I'm just showing you the comparison, if we go stipend, it's twenty-five thousand, if we go health, medical plan, it's eighty-three thousand.
Well, I know that, but they're not using it now.
Correct, that's why we were trying to incentivize them to stay on it.
We incentivized them already, with the four ninety-seven, and they're using the plan. So now, when you're looking at something changing, you're looking at just, are the new employees that are coming on, gonna use it or not use it? And then, what do we do for all of them?
No, but we also have, right now, if the stipend increases, we have one who will move from our plan to a, to a stipend.
Which will give us four on the stipend.
And that would give us, uh, savings of, just off the top, for the one plan would be, how much?
Well, we're looking at it now, but that may not be forever.
Right.
And it's not saying the employee's gonna save.
I feel like we're druggling it, uh, by the employee instead of by the policy.
Can I make it super simple?
Yeah, you can, try.
Um, so, the, the bottom line is, um, I have one employee who takes a Family Plan to the town. That's approximately twenty-two thousand dollars the town is paying, that's the eighty percent portion.
Yeah.
His spouse gets a opt-out stipend, she's in the public sector as well, approximately, it's like seven thousand seventy-two hundred. So with the existing stipend of just shy of six thousand, he wasn't obviously willing to come off of the town's insurance. Eighty-five hundred is enough for him to come off the town's insurance, and it's enough to keep my other employee, who doesn't have the town's insurance, from going on the town's insurance. So even if we increase the stipend to eighty-five hundred, with him coming off the Family Plan, the town saves approximately six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And then moving forward, that's an incentive for new employees to not take the town's insurance.
I know, but we're going, not so much by a policy, we're going by an employee, which, as we know, employees change, and those plans, they could pick other ones or change them, and the plan gets changed. So I'm trying not to look at this policy by the employee, and look at it as a policy that the town is willing to do. So, I don't see anywhere here, I see sixty percent of that plan is four ninety-seven, eighty-five hundred divided by twelve, how much percentage of that plan are you talking about, giving away?
The eighty-five hundred?
Yeah. Is it eighty-five percent?
Almost like seven hundred bucks a month.
It's seven oh eight a month, it's broken down on the left.
So seven oh eight minus the four ninety-seven, which was a sixty percent.
Yeah.
What percentage of the plan is?
Okay, I haven't done that, but.
I thought we came, you know, on four eighteen, we bumped that up from what that other plan was to the sixty percent, to come, to try and come up at that time.
But the thing is, this is twenty, we're planning for twenty twenty-five, and it's a moving target, this healthcare cost.
And it's, it's a moving target every time.
Right, because the thing is, that's why it's this.
There's gonna always be a living document.
I don't think we have to change it every term. Oh, I, I disagree, because the thing is, as, as, uh, health insurance goes up, we gotta incentivize employees that we currently have to stay with us. In other words, if, if those three officers come on our Family Plan, our bill just goes through the roof. If we can't incentivize them to stay off our Family Plan, and take the stipend, it's, that's a win.
That's what the.
I don't, I don't think you're looking at that the right way.
In other words, I, I.
We can incentivize it partially, Mike, but if they're gonna choose the plan or not choose the plan, it shouldn't be just financial.
Oh, the thing is, it's, it's.
Whether their wife has or doesn't.
The thing is, insurance goes, it's all financial, it is all financial, because.
You'll notice from what Chris said, the wife gets seventy, one hundred dollars or whatever, she's not even getting eighty-five.
But if you look at the worksheet that is attached to that.
Yeah.
The back one, these, these were studies that Chris researched for us, so that we can get a better understanding of where these other towns are for their stipends.
It says fifty percent, not sixty percent, right?
That's correct, that's the most statement, yep.
So that's wrong.
I had to put this together before the change, oh, my apologies. I guess what, what we're trying to do is, is incentivize people to come off of the town's insurance, to, to save, and, and stay off the town's insurance, and not come on the town.
We just revised our policy on four eighteen of twenty-four, and now, we're in October, and we're doing it again.
Well, it hasn't gone to effect yet, it, it's effective January first. You spoke about it after we set the budget, and I didn't have the money to increase the stipend, and I asked the board to make it effective January first. Cause it wasn't, you, we have open enrollment in December, and this is when we gotta get, entice our full-timers to say, it's worth it for me to go to the stipend in lieu of.
So this sixty percent is in effect right now, as part of your budget, right?
It will be for two, twenty twenty-five. Right now, we are at that fifty percent.
So we changed it on four eighteen of this year, and you wanna change it again, before you've even used this amount?
Correct.
And did you get me the percentage of this?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five, so I'm just guessing at eighty-five, that's right, when you do that?
Yeah, it's well over eighty-five, but eighty-five point five.
I think it's a win to, um, incentivize enough to move them off and keep them off our plan, and I want it to have insurance.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna move this every time that we have to change employees.
But, but the thing is, every time, every, every year, we have a moving target, but this healthcare costs go up every year regardless.
Yeah, so what am I gonna do? So say it keeps going up, Mike, do we have to pay them over a hundred percent to incentivize it?
Well, the thing is, as long as it's in the, we're in the black, and the thing is, we're saving money in the black, I, I would just say, that's a moving target.
But it's by the individuals right now, and if they change their mind and say, hey, I don't wanna do that anymore, and then they sign up for it, then we're.
The thing is, it's open enrollment, open enrollment ends, and then they're stuck with the plan for the year, if, alright?
Unless they, the spouse is unemployed, or loses their job, or dies, and they need to come back on our plan.
I think we change this to sixty percent in, uh, four eighteen of this year, we should try it for at least a year, and see how it goes, and then look at it. The fact that the plan's just changed for everybody else, um, I don't think it's, we should jump on changing this right now.
I think the sixty percent's too low to incentivize anybody, it's gonna incentivize some, but the thing is.
You've got six thousand dollars, Mike, it's still an incentive.
When you're not, when you're sitting down at the kitchen table, and you're running the numbers at home, and you find out, geez, my company's gonna give me seven thousand dollars. When you're not, when you're sitting down at the kitchen table and you're running the numbers at home, you find out, geez, my company's gonna give me seven thousand dollars. And we need to take it, well, we're gonna go with the town of Dunbar, because they're, we don't pay the majority of it, they pay hardly anything, so I'm gonna go with Dunbar's and then we're stuck with the bill. We up it a little bit, we save money, no matter what we do, for one year, we save money. We can also lower if we have to, but the thing is, I'm looking at, not down the road, what if, I'm looking at right now, what can we do to save some dollars? Right, right off the top, we're saving dollars now, you can't predict employees down the future, you don't know what they're gonna do, you don't know what health is gonna do in the future.
Right now, Mike, we're predicting employees, cause we don't know what these guys are gonna do.
Well, we already got a commitment.
But we have a commitment for one, so the three will change to four and the town will lower the overall uh, health budget by about five thousand four hundred dollars.
Say their wife or their spouse, let's just say spouse, has insurance.
Yeah.
And they don't really need our insurance, they're gonna get six thousand dollars almost this year. Now you're talking that now we're gonna make eighty-five hundred like it's gonna make a difference. If their spouse already has insurance that they can use, they're still getting six thousand dollars, that's still an incentive. And it's a pretty large incentive, when you ask me. And I don't think we should be bumping that up without even trying what we just did. I mean, we worked for hours reworking this number to sixty percent the first time it went around.
Are, are you always?
You know, we went around it for two or three days and went around and around about it.
But the thing is, the healthcare has gone crazy up.
And it's gonna continue to do that.
I, I agree, that's why this has always had to be a living document, subject to change.
It does, but I don't think we need to change it twice in one calendar year, when it hasn't even been in effect to be used.
Well, the thing is, what, so what you're doing is you're gonna, the thing is, we have three employees, we're not gonna get the fourth, so you're basically just wasting. Our tax dollars of twenty, was it, how much you were saying?
You already have three on it, Mike, you're not wasting any of them.
Oh, you are, you are, how much potential can I save, Lee? What was that, if I had one of them?
Nineteen thousand dollars.
Okay, nineteen thousand dollars, that, that's just chump change, I can buy a coffee with nineteen thousand dollars.
Well, you've got, if that employee goes on, you got the difference between eighty-five hundred and six thousand. There's a difference.
What's the net savings for having one employee come on at eighty-five hundred, net savings?
Five thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars. That's if the other two jump on with the plan.
So, so five thousand dollars, I guess you can't buy a cup of coffee with that, can you?
I don't think we should change our policy over, it's what I'm trying to tell you.
Well, I think is when it comes to saving dollars and taxpayer dollars, I'm saying to the public. Our job is to wa- be watching up queues and queues and basically saving the tax, tax dollars when we can. This is saving tax dollars, because you're, you just don't wanna change it now, because we haven't, it's, it's time, maybe this time, we, we, we went too low maybe by not giving enough incentive. We have to give enough incentive where people will jump on our plan and go with the spouse's plan. Thing is, I'm all about saving taxpayers' dollars, if you don't, if you wanna spend taxpayer dollars, Dave, that's, that's fine, but. Maybe you won't, maybe I'll, we'll get an election sign for you next time, I like to waste taxpayer dollars, that's what you're asking for.
Mike, I don't think eighty-five percent's the right amount.
I think five thousand dollar savings is worth it.
What about your view?
And the thing is, if we can save the town five thousand dollars, I'll take it, any day of the week. If I can save a thousand dollars, I'd be, if it's worth, I like to go through the effort and see if it's worth it. But five thousand dollars is a lot, and that may incentivize a few more people to come and join the plan, because we're offering it a little bit more of an incentive.
I've given you my view and you've given your view.
I agree.
We either vote on it or we pass it along.
I just want to go on the record that you're uh.
Don't go on the record anything about me, you say what you wanna say to yourself.
No, I didn't say, I'm going on the record that I wanna save the towns some dollars and that I'm not gonna waste taxpayer dollars.
That's good, you can do that.
And if you, if you wanna do opposite me, you, you can say your piece. Justin, it's gonna be up to you, we have a stalemate here.
I see that.
The thing is, I'd be, I'd be willing, Dave, maybe eight thousand dollars, I'd drop a little bit. Make it a little more, make it, make it, but the thing is, I think we have to be competitive.
From what Chris said, they even offered, the other one got offered seventy-one hundred, why would we be up eighty-five?
I think is, that's last year's, that's not current.
I think the, the rationale was, um, if we had something around what the spouse's buyout is, it's not worth the hassle to switch the plan. Eighty-five was, at least talking with my guys, that was enough to get one off the town's insurance completely. And keep another one from joining the town's insurance, because his wife's insurance cost just went up. So I'm just, I think looking at it, the overall picture, it, it's gonna save the town money. And I understand what you're saying, it's employee.
I don't wanna change this every time you change an employee and somebody says, hey, Chris, if you go up a thousand dollars, I'll change, I'll take my. I feel like we're playing Russian roulette, if you remember, we did the sixty percent. We listened to all your feedback, we went through three days of debate about it, different meetings. And we came up with a sixty percent of a roundabout number, to make your department happy then.
Well, I, I don't remember being a part of that conversation.
Well, you were a part of that, cause you were the one that helped bring that up.
I, I think, I remember vaguely talking about it, but the, the rationale behind this is trying to find a number, because the, the sixty percent. Wasn't gonna make a difference, at least at the PD, dropping someone off the insurance.
Now, when we did this on four eighteen, we were looking at specifically the PD and who would stay on and who would stay off and who was gonna do it. Because realistically, the PD are the only ones we have really dropping on off of it.
And Dave, as I recall, you had some erroneous numbers and I went to the PD department, I static, I'm saying, boy, this is, we're gonna give, it's gonna be a win for the town and a win for the department. But the numbers you gave me was, were wrong and they had to be adjusted the following week to reflect that it was a much lower number you gave me.
Yeah, this is sixty percent of a single plan.
Yeah, that's right.
A lower single plan, that's where the sixty percent came from.
Right.
What we're looking at, uh, these are people.
Which is what we've voted on.
Yeah, but these people are enrolled in family plans and what we're saving overall by increasing the, uh, get, doing away with the sixty percent. Is incentivizing them to stay off the plan and still save money for the town. From the employer having to pay the eighty percent of their family.
I like the idea of saving the town money, the problem is, I feel like we are just, again. Doing it for these employees now, what's to say the next employees are gonna be the same way, that's how I feel. Is like we're, we're always, you know, kinda saying, okay, these group of employees, this is what is gonna happen, but what if that changes, right?
Feels to be like this is a, it's a knee-jerk reaction to me, is what it feels like. And the fact that if one of those spouses loses their job, they're gonna come back on this policy irregardless. So. To, to, to lower our budget down, um.
Five thousand fifty.
Five thousand dollars, to me, doesn't seem like a wise move for the town. And we put a lot of time in to get to that sixty percent earlier, I know that you and I, we went back and forth.
Right, and the thing is, I, I.
We know we were doing a good thing for the employees and.
You gave me some wrong numbers and the thing is, I, I remember going to the police department and the thing is, he's looking at me like saying like, your numbers are wrong, Mike, because I.
The numbers were wrong because we got given the wrong form.
Yeah.
I wasn't here, that's odd.
So. But anyway, I'm, you know, that's, that's, we've all said our thoughts, so do we wanna put this off until we come up with better numbers or do we wanna vote on it? Or what do we wanna do?
I like to table it for, for a next meeting that we think about it a little bit more.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's a good idea, cause I think uh, people are getting heated, you two are going at it.
Yeah.
Everybody should uh, think about it for a week, two weeks and.
Yeah, I, I, I recommend weeks.
Bring it back to discussion.
And I'll have the changes for later, the rest of the personnel policy.
Right.
Ready for that.
Okay. Going on to the next subject. Building, planning and zoning budget.
Yes, as the board's um, has been made aware of the budget report, the budget has been developed in the software. Um, the department heads have all been, uh, distributed all of their budget account numbers. And I actually had a few department heads that were asking, when might get my budget report, I'm ready. So um, a little bit of fire under me, got these processed today, so. Donna was nice enough to say, I am ready, I'd like to give you my budgets for tonight's discussion and if you have any questions, I can. Uh, take them back to her for discussion, so as you know, Donna will be retiring at the end of twenty twenty-five now. Um, she has budgeted her hourly rate, three percent cola for forty hours a week, times fifty-two weeks, so she's got the. Um, allocated sixty-two to seventy-five. Now I put these other numbers in the right-hand column, column eight, to show what she had proposed for the new hire. She is thinking that uh, hiring this individual under her wage scale, step one, for twenty hours a week, for eight weeks, should be more than adequate for her. To train the individual and then that person can um, convert to full-time. She also said if that person is um, knowledgeable enough and learning quickly enough, that she would not have, be adverse to retiring a little earlier. So the individual could take over the role that she currently holds. So the secretary of building inspection is up four thousand four fifty and that's for the eight weeks of overtime, uh, uh, overlap of twenty hours a week. Um, the only other increase she had in there was um, the three percent for the um, admin building inspector. And that was it, so we're looking at ninety-seven eight forty-eight as presented. Any questions?
What was that, forty-four fifty line?
That's the line down here rounded. New hire suggests step one, twenty hours, eight weeks, four forty-nine, which, sixty, which is rounded, four forty.
Okay.
Forty-four fifty. Cause orig- originally you had mentioned something like two months, three months.
Yeah, we're gonna have that bump, yeah.
Yeah, she's feeling that she probably, if we can hire the right person, train that person with a twenty-hour work week.
Okay.
Okay, next, and, and then um, the next planning board and zoning is combined in their accounts. The only increase that she has there, it would be um. Fees and services, which is where we post our central New Hampshire regional planning commission dues, that's based on population and that's what it, it points to. That will be a one-line expense. Uh, mapping and online query, she did get confirmation, I think one of you has the email confirmation for support. That, that's what we can expect to be built for our mapping services and online uh, query GIS. Everything else stays the same, so we have just a slight increase of a couple of hundred dollars.
Looks good.
Okay, I just thought it would be nice to try and get some of these smaller budgets out of the way.
Yeah, I would like to take your idea up and do a folder for each of us, we can keep these in our file and.
Yeah, okay.
We need to look back at them, we can have them, and we go through the budget.
Yeah, cause we go through a lot of paperwork here, so. I don't have a problem, I'll get you some.
So you want to keep all of ours on? Yeah.
Okay. That's it for the agenda.
Okay, I think we'll go into the uh, mailbox items next. Okay, looks like we get an email from the recreation department, spread the word, we're invited to the Harvest Moon Supper Saturday, November second, twenty twenty-four, it is free. The Harvest Moon Supper by the Dunbar Recreation Committee.
Yeah, there's half the times on that.
It's done by the PTO, five to eight PM.
Can I talk about that a little bit?
Sure.
What they usually do is, it's free, but the thing is, what they usually do will have baskets, where silent auction baskets. And uh, that's where they want you to donate some money, bid on the baskets and uh, I'd say the baskets are definitely worthwhile. Yeah, the chances of winning are better than the lottery. Good, Leo.
That correspondence they're getting to you to spread the word.
Yes.
Okay. Are we uh, we posted it somehow or they do it all?
I, I just got that email a couple of days ago, uh, they have posted it on the marquee.
Yeah.
Um, but she's asking, because she hasn't met with the board in a little while, just to let you know.
I know, it's something around the school too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's on some website, yes.
I can put it on the um, town website as well.
Okay, next thing we have. We have email from the garden club. They would like to donate five hundred flower bulbs to plant in the town common area. They wanna one refurbish the town commons current daffodil collection. And I'm all for that, what do you guys think? Mike?
I'm not, that's, that's great, they could donate that, where they could, they could plant them too?
I think so.
Okay.
No, you guys, you guys. Let them know we don't need to uh, we don't need to have a meet with us, Lee, they can go ahead with that.
Yeah, that's why I was trying to bring it up to you.
Okay.
Tell Mike I'll go out now.
We have an email from Chris from Live to recognize Officer Tompkins regarding his response to a crisis that was handled. And uh. This, this was great to see, because uh, anytime we can help somebody off a ledge in a crisis, it's huge. He had somebody that was gonna um, talk about suicide, he was able to walk him through and get him some help, so. That to me is huge.
He did a really good job.
Right, yeah. Thank him for the board, Justin.
Sure, well, thank you.
I want his card then.
What's that?
I want his card, this is his card in case I need him.
Sure. Write his personal uh, home number on the back for you.
Cool. Okay, we have an approval from the PUC of the town's application to offer community power for Dunbar residents. So this is great, there's nothing further we need to do, there's a couple of small things I think the energy committee will work on. But again, it's gonna be mostly looking over numbers now to see if they're in the positive for the town.
Thing is, um, I thought anywhere between ten and eleven dollars per kilowatt would be something to think about, seriously.
Dollars?
Cents.
Cents.
I was thinking nine, nine point four.
I, I, I think that would stay on, Dave.
They could lock us in now at ten uh, point five, she said.
That's, that's not bad.
She thinks we might do better and I'm questioning her thoughts, but. She says she's, that's what they're gonna do. Somebody stole your card. Okay. We have another email here from Mary Gerard, the door in the front entrance, which is not even cold out anymore, is getting hard to work again. So I think that uh. Mister Chappone sent a guy over to work on last year, let's uh, get ahold of their office through Heidi, I guess.
I went in there Sunday, Dave, it was unlocked.
Was it hard to open?
I, I don't think so. I, I, but I'm not eighty years old either.
Right.
So the thing is, it may be worthwhile, maybe some boot camp might be worthwhile.
She had suggested possibly doing a, a touch tone handicap pad, but that is a whole different locking process that uh, gets done. It would have had to been done during the construction.
But she did offer them to.
Well, they'd like a doorbell, that's.
A very inexpensive doorbell.
She did ask, ask for a doorbell that would ring inside and uh. But those are wireless now, yeah.
Yeah, they are.
Well, I think if we could have Joe Marie maybe get her one of those.
So I think the ideal thing would be to have one ring in the library, in, in the hallway, so if somebody hears the doorbell ringing. Then they'll question what the noise is and maybe go downstairs.
I just uh. I wanna make sure it's wireless and I also don't wanna attach a bunch of stuff to the face of the building. Maybe if we could get a little plaque, ring for service if handicap or something.
Yeah.
Small that's not taped to the building and.
Okay.
Yeah. There are a lot of things taped upstairs, you know.
There's something else in that email.
So what would the handicap sign say, ring here?
Ring for service.
Ring for service?
I thought those are the only two things in there.
Or a baby changing station.
Oh, yeah, baby changing station.
Oh.
We had talked about that and kind of uh, approved that at a prior meeting, Mike, you remember that?
I remember that.
There isn't really a good spot to put it, because the heater is on the wall, that's available for the chain and table, I just didn't know if it would affect the.
I don't think it will, because it closes up, it's only about five or six inches away and you can keep it up higher. You have people with custom cabinets and um, with just enough space for the heat to come out, I don't think that if it's stored away.
I know the upstairs heater doesn't run, cause all the heat rises.
Oh.
So the downstairs one runs a lot, so why don't we get our guy, our handyman to install on the second floor?
Okay.
Um, like three or four inches above the heater.
Okay.
Whatever, maybe, you know, look at the suggested height to put him for a woman there. And so, I'm scared, I'm scared, no, I think so, cause that one never runs, cause all the heat rises.
Do you wanna have them double check the measurements, make sure there's a.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Before that.
Before we buy or price anything.
Oh, yeah, before they buy it too.
There isn't enough room, I measured a lot.
Yeah.
Oh, you did measure.
It was just the only spot, the only wall without handicap, ground bars and sinks and toilets and switches.
Yeah.
Was above the heater.
Yeah.
But Joe Marie had gotten me the dimensions on it and.
Yeah, and the, this one that she. Yeah, and the, this one that she found was a little bit smaller, not real fancy, but it is a changing table.
Lots of works.
To keep your baby off the floor, off the ground, you know, off the floor.
So there's a board, we have consensus to get.
Figure it out.
Start with one, see how it works, okay.
Do you guys ever have a need for one in here, Lynn?
No, no, I haven't.
Nobody from the tax.
Probably, no, I don't. Most of the time they're in their, their strollers and they're, they're leaving, but.
Okay.
Never thought of that, but.
I think we do have room in our bathroom if we needed one there.
We'd have to put it against um, one of the cabinets, they're.
I would just wait till the uh, need.
Yes, I agree.
First again. We have an email from uh, the chief, Chris Remlau, uh, in reference to dispatch. And the funds are waiting on here and uh.
Is that the updated?
No, I, I apologize. There was um.
Oh.
I put it on the front.
There's uh, one, one more thing that um, the Goffstown chief and I talked about, which is the infrastructure that they put on Powell Lane, um, the repeater uh, directly benefits us. So he had talked about um, there's a lease that we have to pay, U S Senator. Right now Goffstown pays the entire thing. And he had proposed us paying half of it, which is like, I think it's like a hundred dollars a month or something, uh, just building that into the contract. So he's working on getting that language in there. Um, and I will get that to the board as soon as I get that updated contract, so I, I apologize.
Weren't we supposed to get free on that tower?
Uh, we need to get charged to put it up there, but you still have to pay the uh, the lease. There's, there's a leasing cost for some of the equipment that they put there. I think it's like two, it's like two hu- two hundred and ten dollars a month, I think. But it's improved our communications on that side of town.
We don't need to check in that free part, it's just the installation.
I can ask Dawn to look into it, but.
There, there is some, in the variance, there is um, I'll check with the chief because I don't think it, I don't think it has anything to do with the, the variance that was granted. It's some other.
Maybe, maybe Chris, uh, if we can give you a copy of that?
I have it, yeah. I sent it to Goffstown.
You did, okay.
Yeah, but I'll circle back with him, cause I do wanna make sure we're not paying for something we shouldn't be.
This is asking for a signature when he does have it, but I'm fine with the rates on everything. You guys fine with it?
Well, the rate's gonna go up a little bit if he.
Right, with that one line out there.
He's gonna confirm it.
It'll be a fixed amount if you guys want me to just sign it out there.
I'll give consensus here.
So when it's ready, I can put it in with the payroll manifest so that you can just sign it.
That way there's no delay.
Thank you. And it's, I think you saw, it's the same, pretty much the same one we were paying ten years ago with uh, well, not as good of a service.
So win-win.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't tell them that.
Well, now they know.
Okay, we get a letter from Zero Waste um, here, a certified mail.
Yeah.
To offer service developed, pay as you go through. And uh, they said that waste gets reduced as much as fifty percent. I think that's because it's on the side of the road. But here's a pay as you go. I think uh, we'll let the transfer station read it. I know that it was brought up in a couple of other meetings we had here and people didn't really like it and figure they're paying taxes already. And to do a pay as you go, when it's one of our own new services is be able to go up there.
Well, he's, he sent me, after we basically said no to him, he just kept hounding me with emails, uh, wanting to get to the door.
Right.
As a salesman.
Yeah.
And we said no.
You know how those salesmen are.
Oh, very much so. They work on commissions.
Uh, we have a residence on uh, fifty one story held road, um, has a blind son. It would like to have some signs put up. I think that this is something that our road agent Jeff Crosby can take care of. You guys in consensus to give this over to Jeff?
I think uh, it was the email changes. We had to have board approval on that before we go forward and that, it's a no brainer.
Yeah, they kind of said that, but I think it's something that the highway department would take care of.
Well, I know we've had residents in the past ask for a no through road, no this, no that. And sometimes it's a little bit uh, clear if the board is made aware that these lot, signs are being asked to be put up. And that uh, you are in agreement, but yeah, he should move forward with it, so we'll.
How old is the son?
I don't know.
I mean.
Why does that make a difference?
Well, yeah, he's a fifty five year old son.
He's not eligible for.
Not a child.
No, I, I have full agreement. I mean, it's uh, I'm surprised the road agent couldn't act on himself.
Let's give it to Jeff. Recreation connection to lighting on the common.
Correct.
It was originally five to eight P M. Now it will be, correct time is dusk till ten P M.
About the last year.
Yeah, she said she misspoke and, but she wanted to clarify it with the board so that it would be done correctly.
There's another part of this thing here. They'd also like to hire company that's insured to install the lights on the common. Boy Scouts will be conducting scouting for food.
That's a separate one. But uh, yeah, I told, I explained her to her um, that if they have it within the budget. And she said the P T O is gonna be donating some funding to ha- hire this uh, lighting company that will install the Christmas lights.
I, I would make sure that Justin, I'd make sure that the recommendations Justin pointed out, like the colored uh, cords. That they follow the same recommendations that the board all agree to.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm assuming that company's not gonna put the cords down, cause we asked them to put it down.
Well, they'll have to test it and then remove the cords.
Right.
Make sure that.
And then you wanna certain, certain brightly colored cords too.
Okay, I'll remind Derek about that.
Um, did you guys get to see him?
Yeah, I saw that. Uh, yeah, cause they had asked to put him up early.
Right.
That's why we didn't wanna put the cords down until like the day, day or two before the.
Yeah, can you imagine today? What about a mess?
Yeah, they can test them, but I think it's, but we don't love animals.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good with that?
Yeah. Okay.
Get those caveats.
And now we have a request here for the Boy Scouts to conduct uh, scouting for food from the bandstand location. Saturday, November ninth, eight to twelve.
Yeah. I know that they typically will contact transfer station supervisor and ask the same. Have they done that? Did they do that last year?
Did they last year, but we're hearing anything missing from it.
Okay, so if they're planning on it, they should contact you.
Yeah, usually they do.
I mean, pick up, when are you applying to?
Yeah, usually do a collection on Saturday from eight to twelve. Uh, we have a request. So the police department looks like Chris, you come with us?
Uh, yes, uh, this has continued upon the actual having the surplus. I, I think I will. Um, but we have an opportunity to get some new to us mobile data terminals, which are the computers in our cruisers. Um, Goffstown cycles those out and then um, gives those to us to use. But in order to install them, uh, it's approximately three thousand dollars uh, to take out our existing M D Ts, put in the new ones and then run the cabling and stuff. Which these M D Ts probably cost like two or three grand a piece, so it's a steal for us. That's part of our I T pass through costs that we pay in the dispatch contract. So that's one piece of it. And then the other piece, um, the board may remember I applied for congressionally directed spending uh, earlier this year, uh, to get some repeaters in our cruisers, which basically amplifies our radio signal. Cause as soon as we hit Mills Hill, what do you can attest this to? Basically like the whole north part of Dunbarton is a black hole for radio reception. Um, repeaters would basically amplify our signal um, to get us back to the tower, either on Power Lane or on Communic and then back to dispatch. So uh, I got a quote for one repeater uh, to put in one of our main patrol vehicles. And that includes a one-time FCC licensing fee, so any uh, repeaters moving forward will be a thousand dollars less. But this is a project that I'm just, I'm trying to chip away at. It's kind of a, you know.
If you have money in the budget there and you wanna encumber it, I don't have an issue with it.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to share?
Fine.
Um, we're also, remind me if they don't come in in time, Lena. I don't think the uh, concurrent time force would like to encumber that thousand dollars. So they can use thousand from this year and thousand from next year to get their goal done.
To have better contractors and so on, so.
Things that they're gonna get from us, so.
I'll reach out.
What about the tree?
Down that tree.
Let the tree go.
Pretty dead one. The replacement.
Yeah. One of you was supposed to pick out.
It's gonna be right out here. Looks pretty nice, doesn't it?
Yeah.
The trees are starting to rot already. Okay, um, we've got one other thing here, I think. Lena's already uh, sent out all of her um, information to all the department heads to ask them for uh, level services with the three percent cola. Figured into their budgets and uh, has asked them all to, um, she's given them their prior year budgets and asked them to start on their budget process. Thank you, Lena, for getting to jump on that.
No, I have, I only have four meetings before.
I thought she created a great format as an assist to the department chiefs. I thought, did you see that, what did you see that? You'll see it in the email. And in one, is there also an inbox too? Um, but I think is uh, the way she created a uh, worksheet is very nice.
Changed the headers, so.
Very easy to follow. I really appreciate, I like that format.
I'm gonna um, open up for public comment one more time.
Yep.
Go ahead.
I just got the uh, Five Rivers Annual Report. I don't know if any of you guys are members, if you got it or not. I'll drop it off. If you guys are interested in reading, this is about the Ryder, the old Ryder homestead, the Les Hammond's old property. Has been put into conservation.
Yeah.
There's an article on it here. And it, and again, it reiterates why the uh, Conservation Commission needs that money because they put somebody towards that too. Otherwise it wouldn't happen. So it's a good article and I thought maybe if you guys can get the article, you could read it. I brought it in. And uh, and there's an envelope for donations in here too.
Of course.
So, you know, you're welcome to use it.
Okay.
I'll drop it off after the meeting.
Thank you, Leo.
I, I saying corrected. I went through my notes and I think where I got confused about the whole initial conversation with the stipend thing is I know we had had a lot of conversations and it was also in the midst of looking at the cost sharing, like the eighty twenty, so I, I apologize. This has been kind of a longstanding project and I got things kind of mishmashed in my brain, so.
That's all right.
But I appreciated the board's time and consideration. I certainly don't want it to be a, a divisive topic or an issue. We're just kind of looking at it, you know, and, and I do understand what the board's saying.
Okay.
The decisions were very made in two weeks.
Fair enough, yeah.
Yeah, we'll be next time. We'll have uh, the other format all ready to go and stuff too. What do you, what do you got? Anything else for us or?
Just that I had some breakdowns this week. The ma- excuse me, the Mac broke down. Still drivable, but I haven't been driving it. It has a antifreeze leak, pretty substantial one. Um, so pretty much it's been moving around the yard. Order the parts. Mechanic's gonna try and get in there tomorrow and fix it. The truck's just showing its age, but I know, I'm not saying we're looking to replace it though, you know, cause you're talking a fairly steep hill. The truck's still good shape, but it's just something, it was a heater core. Um, you know, it's twenty two years old. If the heater core didn't go, then there's probably something wrong with it. Um, just in another little breakdown with the skid stand, nothing major. Um, at some point I do need to come and sit with the board. We need to have a discussion about warrant articles and capital reserves because. I'm gonna try and get you some numbers. Maybe sort of, well, the other thing is we gotta stop planning a little more for the future down there. My, all my machines are getting some thirty year old age on them. Some are pushing thirty five. Some of the other machines are pushing twenty two, like the compact that's twenty two years old. Yes, it's not gonna fall apart tomorrow. We're probably gonna get a few more years out of it, but we need to stop planning for.
Capital reserve fund is probably.
Cause you're talking, off the top of your head, just guessing, you're probably looking at a close to a hundred grand for a compact there.
You put some of those items in your capital reserve already, right?
Right, but I think we're just, we're kind of falling behind a little bit, so we just need to kind of look at it a little bit and say, okay, at some point we're gonna have to do this and you're gonna have to make some changes. We're one of the departments that sees the majority of the town, you know, and the town's growing and is what it is, but we're gonna have to do some baby steps with it and get some things back together. And I talked with Jeff and within the next week or so, he's gonna start digging. And then they're gonna pave the bad spots, not the whole facility, just the bad spots that are, you know, there's basically nothing there. The asphalt's just crumbled apart.
Yeah.
So, and that's been down twenty two years, just the base coat.
And then were they gonna do the overcoat next year or?
I don't know. Jeff and I just talked about these spots for now. I mean, it's a definitely a, a subject for another day, but he did talk that, you know, he agreed at some point the town's gonna have to do something, or you're gonna lose everything else that's there. Cause that's just the base coat that's been there for twenty two years and they never want to spend the money to top that hole. Now your repairs are what it would have cost to top it, so is what it is.
Okay, thanks. Do you have anything for us?
Wait, wait, I wanna ask, how did Hazard's waste go last week?
I don't have the final numbers. Usually I get an email from it. It was, I think the car numbers were up, but the quantity was down.
So you felt that there was any, any long waits for people? It was going pretty fast.
I think it kind of, I don't think it's been like it was in the past, but it still came in groves. You know, always trying to take care of the traffic situation, but it seemed to go okay.
And did you ever have help?
She worked, Friday night, she worked helping me move trucks, cause we get a, we rent a truck. Makes things way easier, plus we have the pickup.
I assume, thank you.
And then.
With the both of you.
So, yeah, but we got out quicker than we thought, so that all worked out.
Thank you.
Did you end up uh, having to haul from any other company because our truck's down?
No, so what I did, um, I left everything there and I just moved. The demo box was full. I took the one that we normally use for brush, slid it over there. I'm not gonna pack it. Barely wanna put stuff in it, cause that thumps us pretty rough. And then if he gets the truck done, I didn't, excuse me, I didn't haul trash or anything. That's set in there. So if he gets it taken care of tomorrow, which is the plan, um, Saturday morning I'll come in, I'll run a load of trash, come back. Switch the box that's there, potentially run that load, come back and then we'll be back on our schedule. And next week I'll have like six, seven loads to go, six loads to go out next week, so then we'll be back in the swing of things. But my concern was with the leak, I slowed it down, but I don't wanna do damage to that motor. You know, you're talking probably a forty, fifty thousand dollar engine, so I'd rather just have it set for a little bit and make, make the difference up in another week. Well, we should be fine.
Okay, good. Bring it back to Lena. Justin?
Uh.
Mike?
Good.
Um, I just wanna mention that uh, Mike and I made it to the uh, you were at the Dunbarton Heritage Trail.
Yes.
Yeah, we made it to the both the uh, Heritage Trail, uh, Black Heritage Trail meeting. The plaque is in place now, wasn't in place for the show, but um, there is a video of that. It's gonna be online, I believe. Donna's gonna set it up so that people can go and open it up right from our town website.
It's gonna be on the um, recollections of Dunbarton.
Okay.
So.
Fred Mullins did an outstanding job researching uh, the gentleman's contribution to the French Indian War Civil and the Revolutionary War. And then continued his work in the Malaysian Dunbarton for several years after the Revolutionary War. So I, cool as a Fred, he really put his, it took a long time, but he put it, he got the act together and found a lot of good stuff. So Fred did a great job.
And I will take my hats off to Dunbarton um, Historical Awareness Committee, cause as a board, I've talked to the people from the state that go to other towns and stuff doing this all over. And they said Dunbarton was so much easier than any other town they would, because of all the additional help they got from that board. Donna and Fred and uh, everybody putting it together and they said that it went so smooth in this town, they couldn't believe it.
Well, I did a, one interesting comment. They had some samples of some like pastries from the timeframe. Now I know why they, they didn't go to the dentist, because there was no sugar in them. It, I mean, the cookies were there, but the things that, they were like.
Flour.
Flour. And sodas.
Oh, excuse me. My wife made a cake and it had a half a cup of whiskey in it.
Yeah, that's all right.
There you go.
I couldn't eat it.
But the thing is, it was, it was a very, very nice uh, morning.
Good attendance. Um, also on Sunday, um, the Five Rivers had their uh, yearly annual meeting at our uh, elementary school. And they did the uh, the curb of property and the land property um, walks that day out there from the building. But that had quite a few people there, cause it was their annual meeting.
A lot of cars out there.
And Dunbarton uh, was there and they, and Mike and I were there.
Mr. Gurbe, I actually gave a history of what he did to, how he came up to acquire his property. How he took almost two, three years to even walk his property. He didn't know how big it was. He bought it like, without knowing the full size of it and he had no idea what so many acres were. And uh, it was a very interesting discussion, but uh.
There were two good events last weekend that happened within the town. We see another event here tonight. I've never seen so many kids up in the center of town.
There's a big, yeah, it's a.
It was a big time Halloween. Thank you to the police department for helping those kids.
I think that was the busiest I've ever seen it.
A lot of kids. A lot of kids, a lot of young kids.
Yeah.
They were enjoying the Town Common, which is nice to see here. All right, that's all I have. Uh, we're gonna uh, take a two minute recess, but we're gonna go into a non-public. Um, this will be a non-public for RSA ninety one dash A.